I'd like to call the Camrio Library Board to order. Let the record reflect that all members are present. Could we please stand for the flag salute? Mr. Kildee, could you lead us our flag salute?
Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any items to add to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. President.
Okay. Public comments. This is time for public comments. For those in the audience who are here, this is the time to take public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the board today? I have no cards, so we have no. We'll move to the next item. Minutes. Consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Motion for approval in a second. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Camrio Public Library Activity Report. Any comments, or do we have someone here to talk about it? No. Any comments? No staff report, no comments.
There are—
Yes?
There are comments from Mrs. Rolfe. If we can take a moment.
Okay. I thought you started walking up your way. Come on up.
Well, I wasn't going to comment on the activity report, per se. So is it okay if I move to the next thing? I just wanted to make sure that members of the council and members of the library board had a copy of our new newsletter that came out recently. So I have one of those for each of you. Thank you. And also, I would like to invite everybody to the Chinese New Year celebration. It was a huge success last year. We managed to dodge the rain. We're hoping to do so again this year. And it's on February 24th this year. And activities begin at 11 o'clock and performances are beginning at 12. We'd really love it if the members of the City Council Library Board could come and celebrate Chinese New Year with us again this year.
How do you get so lucky? No rain all these times I've been over there, and it's in February, and we've had windows with sunshine and no rain. So let's cross your fingers we have rain the next day, okay?
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay. Thank you very much for your report. I'll be there. Comments from staff? Any comments from board trustees?
Yes.
Ms. Craven?
I attended, as did you and—
Roger.
I think Mr. Tremblay and Mr. Kildee, not Roger.
Oh, that's right.
The opening of the young adult area in the library. And it's a wonderful area. I couldn't believe how many young people took their time out of their holiday to come and see the opening of their area in the library. And they were busy, busy, busy.
Especially with the Xbox, that area.
With everything, yeah.
And once you get used to being able to show your pictures from your camera on the screen, to be able to take your camera, look at your pictures, and show a show on the screen, big screen for everybody around you, once that gets, you know, where everybody can do it, that's gonna be fantastic.
Just remember, you're past teens.
Anyway, there probably gonna be a lot of kids that aren't just from that school, but the other high school and so on. Once they learn about this, it's gonna be there. It was really fantastic what they've done. Mr., you were there, weren't you, Little Tony?
Yes. I was there, and I just wanted to compliment the contractors and city staff on a job very well done. It's a beautiful space. It's going to be very heavily used. It's a real credit to the library.
Kevin?
Very good. Enjoyed it immensely.
Any other comments? Then we'll move on to adjournment. If no other objections, we'll adjourn at this time.
All right. We'll go ahead and open the meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District. We'll let the record reflect that all five directors are present. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Oh, did you make that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. There are no amendments to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Any public comments? This is the time to approach the dais on comments relative to the sanitary district. All right, hearing none. The consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second. Withdrawal.
All right. I hear a motion and a second. Please go ahead and vote. And that is adopted five to zero. All right. Let's see. Any departmental items? Legal counsel? Any comments from staff? Comments from the board of directors? All right. With that, we are adjourned on the sanitary district meeting.
I call the meeting of the Camrio Successor Agency to order and ask the record to reflect that all board members are present, all council members. We have quite a few people in the audience who might not be familiar with the successor agency. We used to have something called redevelopment, a redevelopment agency. And a few years ago, the legislature closed all of the redevelopment agencies in the state, but we still had money and we still had projects that we were building. So we now have a successor agency to the redevelopment agency that essentially pays for these things, and we have money in that account that we have to transfer to another account, a city council account. So with that being said, are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on something that is not on this agenda to the Camrio Successor Agency Board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar. Second.
So motion in a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Comments from staff? Comments from board members? This motion, this meeting is adjourned. And now, I'll finally get around to calling the Camrio City Council meeting to order and ask the record to reflect that all of the council members are in attendance. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Okay. No presentations. The next item is the consent calendar.
Move the approval. Second.
So motion and a second for the consent calendar. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Down to City Manager, Startups Ventura County 2018. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members. This item is to consider a $10,000 sponsorship for this year's Startup Weekend event. In the past, and this would be the third year, so in the past two years, the event was referred to as Startup Weekend Ventura County. It now has a new name, Startups Ventura County. The city has been a sponsor for the past two events, and actually, several of the participants are now housed and are using the coworker space out at the airport, so it is generating some, you know, business results. And the program, because it is fairly new, being the third year, each year they learn from the past and make some adjustments to have an even more effective program the next year. And so for this year, there are some format changes. The participants will now have to go through an application process. The word is now getting out on the street, the application period will start. And this is to ensure that those who participate are coming with somewhat of a business concept already in mind and have thought through their concept a little further, so when they do have the event, they're more prepared and more likely to have a successful result and be able to take advantage of the resources, the mentors, and the subject matter experts that are there in advance on their concepts. So that should be helpful. Also, this year, they're proposing to have a overall winner, and the winner would receive a $20,000 prize, as well as being able to use the coworker space for a year for free and then have other resources worth more than $5,000 of help. There'll be a runner-up, a second place, who'd get $5,000 in prize money, as well as the free year of coworker space and the resource help as well. In the past, there had been winners for separate categories, agricultural, the main categories were agriculture, healthcare, and the Internet of Things. This year, they're not gonna have separate categories, although they'll still focus on those areas, but that there'll be one overall winner and runner-up. So in the past, you've provided your sponsorship with a preference that it go towards the agricultural winner. This year, because there won't be a separate category, the recommendation is that we do provide a $10,000 sponsorship for the overall program. It will be a weekend event. It's intended to be held April 20th to the 22nd. And the staff report said that it would be at the high school campus as it was last year. That's incorrect. The event will actually be at the Camrio Library. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And we also have Gary Cushing with the chamber and Martin Schum, who helped kick off this event two years ago, available in the audience if you have questions for them.
Are there any questions? I have—
Yes.
Yes, to me.
Mrs. McDonald.
I just, out of curiosity, more than anything, first of all, I like the new format. I think you're really getting to somebody that's ready to go to work and to really use this process. My question has to do with, do they have to be ready to go? In other words, if you've got someone who's working somewhere else and they can't walk out the door and begin their one-year rent, is there a timeframe that they have to accept it and get going?
Could you come up and answer it?
I'm just thinking of the people who are still working, have another job, but this is something they want to do and—
Just pull the microphone up, please, and state your name for the record.
Gary Cushing, CEO of the chamber. One of the groups we have in there is, there's three individuals, and they're called Field Force. They all have day jobs. So they are using the facility. They come on the weekends and after work and use it.
Gotcha, okay.
So—
So they can get going and keep their day jobs, so to speak.
Right.
Gotcha.
But with this format, hopefully, we're getting people that are more serious. Because the worst thing is that, what we found, even last year, we made it a little stricter. Last year, we had students from university going, oh, this is just a contest. We thought we'd win. And like, that's not what this was for. It's to create jobs.
Do you want to get going?
So—
No, I think this, to me, this is great, to change it and really focus on getting this some—
Yeah. And so we're trying to build a whole ecosystem here, you know, with the coworking space. And then Martin and I are gonna try to come up with, create an angel fund by the end of this 2018.
Wow.
So—
Pretty good.
I like him. Any other questions?
Have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, Gary and Martin, thanks for being here. As we get further, hopefully, as we get further and further into this, will you be charting the winners long-term and see exactly what they've been able to accomplish?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We'll definitely be watching as they go.
Mr. Tremblay.
Just a compliment both to Mr. Cushing and Mr. Schum. I know how hard they work on this program. I've had the privilege to attend it. I, like Ms. McDonald, I like the changes for this year, so I'm looking forward to seeing the results.
Okay. What are the druthers of the—
I move the approval.
Motion in a second to—
And it's approve a $10,000 scholarship to the 2018 Startups Ventura County. I gotta get that new name.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is introduction of an ordinance reauthorizing the city's public education and government PEG fee and state video franchises holder fee and ratifying CMC, Camrio Municipal Code Chapter 6.20, in conjunction with Spectrum Cables pending renewal of its cable TV franchise. Could we have a report on that, please?
Boy, that was a mouthful. Yes, as you've indicated, Mayor, this is an opportunity for the council to consider the ordinance that's in your packet. The ordinance would reauthorize the Camrio, what we call the PEG fee, stands for public education and government fee. And as well, even though the statute doesn't expressly require reauthorization of the franchise fee, we wanted to make sure that there is no doubt that since we were touching this, we would make clear in the ordinance that it applies to both the PEG fee as well as to the franchise fee. The reason we're doing this is because back in 2006, the state legislature adopted AB 2987, created the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act, affectionately known as DIVCA. And since that time, the franchises have been issued by the California PUC rather than by the city. In this case, we have Time Warner, who had a franchise issued by the state in 2008. It's for 10 years, so it'll be expiring this year. And this would now apply to Spectrum, the successor to Time Warner. And under the terms of the PUC section, Public Utilities Code Section 5870N, we are recommending that the council reauthorize the PEG fee and at the same time also reauthorize the franchise fee. I'll get to the suggested action in a moment, but before I do that, Tom Fox would like to provide some information with regards to the amount of the fee and its formula.
Mayor, members of the council, this is just a clarification for the record. It doesn't change the recommendation or the front of you, but felt it was important, again, to make sure there's accurate information for the record. In the staff report, it was identified that the PEG fee is arrived at based on 50 cents per subscriber per month. And that is true for the Frontier franchise, but for the Spectrum franchise, it's actually based on 1% of the proceeds from the company. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then in the budget impact, the amount of revenue that's, I collected both through the PEG fees and through the franchise fee, those numbers are accurate as far as the amount we collect from both franchises, not just Spectrum. So the amount that we collect from Spectrum is about $118,000 per year for the PEG fee and then $588,000 for the franchise fee, again, just from Spectrum. So just wanted to clarify that.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildee.
Tom, so the $150,000 that we generate, that's from both of the carriers, if you will?
That is correct. It's over $150,000. That was a round number, just based on the fact that we looked at a quarter's worth of information and projected what an annual amount would be.
Spectrum and Frontier, then?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Mr. Tremblay.
Mr. Fox, when you said 1% of the proceeds from the company, did you mean 1% of the net revenue? Could you just clarify that for me?
Actually, I'll ask if Mr. Perick could clarify. It's, if we look at the 5% of the revenue earned by the, so it's based on the same revenue source as the 5%. In the staff report, we identify 5% of the revenue earned by a cable provider. So it'd be the same revenue source, but 1% of that. I'll just ask that Mr. Perick confirm that.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Any other questions?
I have another question.
Yes.
And I don't know if this is the right time or not, but as long as we're discussing this, is there any report on the service that both of these are providing to the residents Again, if it's not the right time, let me know, but—
That's probably a question for me, and I think, I mean, we are talking about Spectrum and we are talking about Frontier, so I think that your question is certainly one that can be asked, and we know that someone can answer it.
So from a legal standpoint, is the right time. As far as having any answer, it's not the right time. I'm not prepared with any statistics on whether we're seeing a change in complaints, for example, or concerns about service. As you know, when Frontier first took over, there were a lot of complaints, some issues, and we did track that until we saw the complaint level taper off to a more normal level. And I have not heard anything to suggest that that's, that we have changed from the more typical complaint level. So if there's something specific that you're hearing or a concern, certainly be glad to look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, would that be appropriate? Maybe if you could get back to us, if you're maybe with an update or whatnot, any new services that they're talking about, any updates? I mean, in that, we all read the articles, and that industry, like all industries, is going through a major transformation. So anything that's new and concurrent, if we could, you know, bring it to our attention. I think that was more the, you know, the direction of the question.
Sure. We'll look into that.
Mr. Tremblay, do you have another question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one finance question. So the PEG fee is about $150,000 revenue, and that's for, as I understand it from the staff report, upgrade of filming and broadcasting equipment. So just query during this 1718 fiscal year, what's the amount in the approved budget for doing those upgrades?
Okay, so just make sure I understand the question, that we do in the CIP have a project to upgrade the audio and visual equipment here in the chambers. And I believe we'll be bringing forward as part of a CIP study session, a discussion on that, that we'll be asking for some feedback to actually help us develop the scope for that. And until the scope is completely confirmed, the cost hasn't been determined yet. We've put a general amount in the CIP, just as a holding spot for a project with the details to be further developed.
Can those, just as a follow-up, can those fees be rolled over from year to year, or is this like an AB 1600?
And so, yeah, so then on the cost side, the CIP discussion would handle that. On the revenue side, that would be a question for finances, to how much we've accumulated.
How much have we accumulated in?
So we do have a special revenue fund for PEG fees, and so those funds are segregated. And we have over $1 million in that fund, in excess of that, since the time we started collecting it. So as Tom mentioned, we are programming a project in the CIP to further refine the use of those funds for equipment upgrades, primarily for this facility.
And I'm sorry, one more question, Madam Mayor. Just as a follow-up, then, the PEG fee, the uses of those funds are statutorily constrained, correct? We can only use them for very limited, narrow purposes, right?
Yes, that is correct. And with that in mind, we've structured some options and scope that we'll be discussing as far as audio and visual, capital improvements that are all within that statutory category.
Thank you.
So the suggested action, then, would be to request a reading of the title, and then hopefully a motion to waive further reading?
I'll request a reading of the title.
This is Ordinance 1149, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camrio, California, reauthorizing the imposition of the city's existing state video franchise holder franchise fee and public educational and governmental PEG fee under Camrio Municipal Code Section 6.20020 and ratifying Municipal Code Section 6.20.
Move the approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You moved the approval. Do you want him to read the rest of the—
Yes.
Of the ordinance? Or you want to waive further reading?
Waive further reading.
I was waiting for somebody sometime to have you read the whole thing.
Hopefully not tonight.
Just put him to test.
Okay, so it's to waive further reading and to adopt the ordinance?
To introduce the ordinance.
To introduce the ordinance. And there was a second. Okay, Mr. Kildee seconded. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have a lot of things to talk to our legal counsel about. And so at this time, I will ask you to give us the provisions and tell us what we'll be going into closed session about.
Yeah, I guess we can't do a motion to waive further reading on this one, can we? All right. There's, as you indicated, Mayor, there are a number of items. There is one conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and that would be initiation of litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9. And then we have several real property matters, five to be specific. These are all authorized under Government Code Section 54956.8, under each item, under negotiation or price in terms of payment. We have the Hotel Conference Center on Ventura Boulevard, and the negotiating parties are the mean companies. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, as they are for all of these items. We have the property located northwest of Lewis and Las Poses Road intersection. The negotiating party is, are the city representatives, as well as the Meyerstein Trust. The third one is the former library at 3100 Ponderosa. The negotiating party's Kids' Dream Children's Museum. The fourth one is the Pleasant Valley Historical Society at 720 Las Poses Road. Negotiating party's Pleasant Valley Historical Society. And the last one is Stock Lumber Property. That's located at 2800 Berry Street, and the negotiating parties are Marvin F. Power and Company.
Okay, we'll be doing that in a few minutes. I think we have time. It's only 5:25 to go through with our council comments. First of all, the city manager have comments? City attorney?
No, you'll be hearing from me later.
Okay. Mr. Tremblay.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up to the plate. In terms of recent meetings attended, I attended together with Mrs. McDonald, the December 20 Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Needs Assessment Ad Hoc Committee. So that has occurred. And then I basically took a holiday hiatus. I have four things I'd like to discuss briefly. The first two are requests for items to be placed on the council's agenda. The first one is with respect to our midtown area. I trust that we all read some recent letters to the Acorn from Mr. McCown and Ray Mair Sainith, I hope I'm pronouncing that individual's name correctly. I think it's fair to say that they struck a responsive chord with me. I think we should have an open and public discussion at the council about two items. I really view this as kind of two items. One is on the homeless issue and homelessness and what the city is doing, because the city is doing quite a bit in this area. And number two, the general land use conditions in this area. And on the first issue, I met with staff a few months ago, because I really want to focus on redevelopment of this general area, Ponderosa to the north, Daly to the south, Arneal and Mobile on bookends. Although I fully recognize that we no longer have a redevelopment agency. And the city did adopt a specific plan for this area, the city many years ago, but for a whole lot of reasons, it has not moved forward. I've been made aware of the many difficult challenges in pursuing the redevelopment of the area, and I think we should talk about it, and I'd like to do that publicly. Item two, well, actually, just to go back for a minute, there is some new legislation from last year's legislative session, which may be helpful to us, which I've asked staff at the December 13th meeting to investigate and report back to us, AB 1598 and AB 1568, respectively, on E-bids and on housing authorities. And I especially want to know whether or not they might help as to the potential for tax increment financing of redevelopment. The second one is, I would like to have, place on the council agenda, or ask that we talk about Policy 1.15, the Guidelines for City Support of Community Events. I want to discuss the adoption of some, I've been thinking about this policy, and I would like to have a discussion about potential adoption of criteria that we can use as council members for city financial support of these events. Two other quick things. One is, I was privileged to attend today a graduation. I was actually pinch-hitting for Madam Mayor today at the Ventura Youth Correctional Facility on Beardsley, and the graduation for their inmate ward labor pre-apprentice program. And I was really impressed with these young men, a dozen young men who graduated from this program after much hard work. They have earned their pre-apprenticeship program, which allows them to apply for the apprenticeship programs in the construction trades. And I was really impressed by the commitment of CYA staff, the authority staff, to the rehabilitative aspects of the wards that are there. I know that we have many people in our community, in our city, that work at the CYA, and I just wanted to give them kudos. And I really appreciate it, being able to represent Madam Mayor at this graduation today. It was a lot of fun and it was eye-opening. And then finally, advertising for, on behalf of Camrio Rotary, for Viva La Camita, which has been a Camrio tradition since 1971. And Viva La Camita is at the community center on Tuesday, January 30, at January 30 of this year, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And you probably see flyers up all over town. And it's a really good community event. Proceeds go for— Proceeds go for charities in our community, so, and it is the Rotary's 48th Annual Viva La Camita, so I'm hopeful that people will, will attend. And that's it for me.
Let me ask you one question, and one of the things you asked to be placed on the agenda regarding the policy. Sometimes we, instead of putting it on like a, an agenda here, we have open discussions at a study session or something. Were you thinking of discussing it here before we sent it to committee and all that, or?
I'm open, I'm open to doing, I'm open to doing it either way. Maybe it's best to, to put it in a study session, or even public.
They eventually come here.
But it'll get here, right.
But, but sometimes we do other things first.
That's fine, I'm willing to do that.
Good. Okay, Mr. Kildee?
Yes, I attended two meetings, December 24th VRSD and January 4th VRSD, and yesterday I represented the city for a Teacher of the Month at Camera Heights School, Jody Atkinson, which was a lot of fun. Jody was my daughter Madeline's first grade teacher, so it was kind of like old homecoming there. It was really neat to see her, and doing a great job up there at that school. So, I attended that. Let's see, I had, oh, is there any more updates? I know it's a private property, but I've been working with you, Dave, on this, that the trees on Pickwick are going to be pruned. Have you got any more updates on any movement on that by chance?
I can respond to that. We've been in contact with the property owner, and we understand that they're looking at getting bids at this time, and we're hopeful that they're going to execute an agreement to have them trimmed.
Will we follow up on that, Jody?
We are, we're actively pursuing that, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald?
Okay. As Mr. Tremblay mentioned, we did have a meeting of the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District Needs Assessment Ad hoc Committee, and it was discussing the, the very preliminary, preliminary report, and hopefully the consultants will be back in about, within the month with their, their report. So, I'll be anxious to, to hear what the public has to say, because remember, they had, they had meetings and online surveys and mail-in surveys, so we all look forward to that, and so that will be coming to, to first the ad hoc committee, and then obviously to both boards. I want to mention that, and when you were talking about who went to the opening of the young adults area in the library, I, I wasn't there that day, and I'll tell you where I was in a moment, but I did sneak in early. I mean, they might have had a little rope across the front, but I learned how to get around that. Anyway, I got to go in there, and I, and I did look at it, and it is just, it is amazing. I mean, it cost us a lot of money, probably more than we thought in the beginning, but it turned out very, very well, and I'm sure they will enjoy, and I hope they take good care of it, because it really is a treasure for them. And the reason I wasn't there, we had, we have a, obviously, a kind of a spectacular thing here in Camarillo, it was the Cavalia Show, and they did something really very nice that day, and I was working with them on that, and that was having a special show for children from the Boys and Girls Clubs from throughout entire Ventura County, Casa Pacifica, oh, there was one other that had to do with children. And then also for our first responders, and for those, volunteers from the American Red Cross, and for those that had lost their homes in the fire. So, it was a free show, open to, to all of those groups, and it was just a really nice thing to, to do, particularly those who had been affected by the fire, because as one of the individuals said, it was the first time they'd smiled in a long, long time. So, it was very nice to, to do my little part in helping that happen. The one other thing that I have, and I just want to have a little discussion about it and decide what to do, it's my understanding, well, I saw a copy of it, that our annual recycling schedule came out, with the schedule and the criteria, what can be recycled and what can't. And I understand we're missing some headings on it, so that if you don't know all the rules, and if you were to read the pamphlet, it would make it sound like you could dispose of things in our regular recycling bins that you shouldn't. And so I want someone to determine whether, particularly because we're in January, whether we should do a reprint and send that back out to our residents, because especially if you're new, we don't want people to go down the wrong path and spend a whole year, you know, doing the wrong thing. I'm sure it was just an oversight, and sometimes when you type, you lose headings and so forth. But I don't know that just putting it on the website is, is enough, because some people don't go to the website, so it's, really, this is the one that goes out, I believe, in the water bills, or it might be mailed, I can't remember. Anyway, that's my one request today, that we look at that and see if we can decide what, how best to make sure we're following the rules.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, first, to begin with, Contract Cities, your honor, and I both attended that in Sacramento. It was a little different, because there weren't quite as many people, it's like seventy, what, seven?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, and I think there may have been two of us out of LA County, Charlotte and I, at least we were mentioned as the only two that were there representing Ventura County. We got into a lot of water, the first speaker, we got into a lot of water issues, talking about the stormwater, stormwater runoff, and what we're going to be facing in the future. Of course, LA's facing it now, but it'd be good to have someone assigned to this to really keep up, I think staff probably does, keep up with this, because there's some bills up that are going to change some things, and not, I don't think to the best for us. So, I think we need to keep up with it and see what bills are affecting us and how, it's going to cost, what was that, a billion dollars? They said a billion dollars for somebody to fix all the stuff they're required to fix, and this is ridiculous. Anyway, the, that was a, a meeting, I'll let Charlotte, I won't take all the away from Charlotte, because she's got a lot of it too. So, I'll go on from there. I, I want to brag about our Rotary. We sold poinsettias during the thing, and we, our money's going toward the victims of the, of the fires going into that. I sold 120 poinsettias myself. I've got a couple left, anybody want them? I'll give you to you. We have, the AWAA Board was continued to the Association Water Agencies, was continued to January 11th, so that'll come up next. Vietnam Veterans Ad hoc Committee, Charlotte led a good committee meeting that, that day, and we're on our fifth event, and I don't have to remember, what was the date that's coming up, Charlotte? That's May?
September, I mean, February.
No, February, February the 10th?
Keep talking, I'm looking.
Anyway, that, that's scheduled for a fun time over at the high school, over at the Campania High School.
February 10th, I believe it starts at nine o'clock in the morning.
Nine o'clock in the morning, and you're going to have a panel of speakers, and most have been in Vietnam or, or, you know, either captured or, or fought in Vietnam. It's going to be an interesting one to go to, and I encourage everyone to have a chance to go, go. The Air Pollution Control Board meeting was going on while we were in Sacramento, so I didn't get it, first time, missed one of those in ages, but I'll get you a report from what happened on that. Rest of it was occupied by family and everything else in the world during Christmas. I think I went, I went to 15 events in two weeks. It was crazy. And so, it was a fun time, I mean, I enjoyed the holidays, but it was busy. That's it, thank you.
Oh, I attended two ribbon cuttings. I also attended the, one of the Fox Canyon meetings was canceled because the staff was still working on, on fire things. I mean, we share county staff that has to do with flood control and water, and they were very busy at that time. So, I did attend the meeting the first week of the month, of this month, and there'll be more to come. I attended the city selection committee meeting. I was selected to continue to represent the five cities on the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency Board, and Mrs. McDonald was selected to serve on the county-wide oversight committee. I think you'll do a good job, and so did the people who voted for you. I attended the Vietnam Veterans Committee, there will be another committee meeting coming up of the city selection to select an alternate for the site authority. Mr. Tremblay was not as selected as the primary, but perhaps you'll.
Hope so.
Perhaps you'll apply to.
Who became, who became the selecting?
Mr. Simons from Moore Park.
He was the alternate.
He was the alternate, he's moving up. He's quite a salesman, is all I can say. He's a real estate salesman. Today, I attended a wonderful event, also out at Cavalia. It was for blind children. They had the children come in, unfortunately, the, I'm trying to say the name of the organization that organizes events and educational facility, education events for the, the children who are visually handicapped, and it's not coming to me right now, but at any rate, they represent Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties, and none of the children from Santa Barbara County were able to come, because the roads closed. But they took the children around, they started out at a station, I think there were seven different stations for them. They felt the food, the oats, the carrots, the apples, and I didn't ask if they were still ours, and the other food that they, and then they took them over to the horses, and if they wanted to, they could feed the horses. They got to feel them and brush them, and that was quite traumatic for some of them, because the horses are big, and if you can't see what, where they're moving their feet or their heads, it's pretty scary to maybe a five or six-year-old. And then they took them to another station where they had saddles, different kinds of saddles, on bales of hay. And I'm going into detail, because I thought it was really interesting, the way they did it. And so the children could sit on a saddle, and then they had the, the saddles that they stand on, on two bales of hay, and so they had them get up and move, and the bales of hay moved somewhat too, because they weren't the new, fresh, squared-off kinds, and they got the feeling of what it would be to be on a horse while you're standing with one foot on each horse. Then they took them into the costume tent, where the costumes are altered or repaired or made, and they felt all the fabric on all the costumes that are coming up, and they felt the wig forms and some of the wigs, and different things that they use in the manufacturer of the costumes. And then we went to another station, and I'm sorry, it's slipping my mind right now, and finally they took them out to the other tent for popcorn, cookies, and drinks. They gave each of the children a cuddly horse to take home, and a four-pack of tickets for their family. And all of the children were very, very excited, even the ones who were hesitant at first to touch the horses on the way going back out. Oh, I know what we did. We had two performances with the horses, and one, we had to all be really, really quiet while they had different trot, different, I don't speak horse, I'm sorry, but there's the trot, and a different type of a gait, and then a canter, and they had to listen for each, each kind. And the children, I don't think, believed, had understood there were, that they ran at different, different paces. So, it was, it was a really good event they had. They do this in every city where they are, and I was just really sorry that a good portion of the children weren't able to come. And then I attended the California Contract Cities Association's Sacramento Legislative Tour, and that's where I was when all you people were representing me at various things this week. And there were, I'll write up a report and send it out on the various bills that are, I think are going to be introduced, there, most of the ones they were talking about were carryover bills. I'll send those numbers out. They did warn us that as far as, because people were asking, is the cell tower bill coming back? They think no, they're going, going to deal with it at the federal level, so I think we need to really keep our eyes open at the federal level as to what's going on with cell towers. If they can't get us one way, they'll get us the other. And the, the catchphrase up there for everything we ask was, we're just going to have to wait and see what the next governor wants to do. So, my personal opinion is, if the legislature in Sacramento doesn't do a whole lot, that's good for us.
That's right. There's one bill, by the way, Charlotte, remember SB 1, that they tried to pass to take away contracting from cities? Well, one of the gentlemen showed up, is one of those who supported that, and he had to come and apologize to all of us for what he did, and I don't think he'll bring that back again, because it failed badly, but there's still some of those that think like that.
I think SB 1 was a bill that had money, I think you're thinking of a different bill.
I'm thinking of the one that, that they had to vote, take away our, our contracting.
Already contracted.
That was SB 1.
Okay.
And it lost.
Okay.
Thank goodness.
Um, at any rate, is that we're finished with our comments, and so we will now recess to a study session on the Old Courthouse property and train station parking, and also, if we have time, to discuss some of these things in the closed session. And we will be back at 7:30, an open session. Well, the study session is an open session. All right. America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There's one item on this evening's agenda, under departmental items, the community choice aggregation in Los Angeles Community Choice Energy, or Lace, I call it, I don't know what other people call it. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. Did you ask for? Did you? Excuse me, did you ask for a public comment, and I missed it?
I'm sorry, I didn't. This is, I'm for a public comment. If there, anyone would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, would you please come forward? I don't have any cards, and I apologize for not asking before. Are you?
I think he's for the agenda.
Sir, are you going to be talking on an item that's on the agenda, or something that's not on the agenda?
On the agenda.
Okay, so, you're not for this. Public comments are for things that are not on the agenda. I see no one come forward, so now, could we have the staff report on the community energy aggregation, community choice aggregation?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council.
Turn his mic on.
Assistant Director of the Municipal Services. I'll be introducing this evening's presentation with a brief staff report. The presentation that we had scheduled tonight was by Gary Giroux, and we will see if he makes it. If he does during the time I give the, the staff report, then we'll just continue on with his PowerPoint that he had scheduled. In January of 2015, the council granted approval for staff to participate in an advisory working group, an AWG, tasked to determine the feasibility of forming a community choice aggregation with the counties of Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo. Community Choice Aggregation, also known as a CCA, is a program established under AB 117, allowing city and county governments to pool or aggregate the electricity demand of their communities for the purpose of supplying electricity. A CCA buys and/or develops power on behalf of potential business and government electricity users in its jurisdiction. In a CCA, the electricity continues to be distributed and delivered over existing electricity lines owned by the investor-owned utility, in our case, Southern California Edison. Having control over energy sources allows CCA to manage its own energy portfolio, consisting of renewable and competitively purchased energy. On September 11th, the AWG, the Advisory Working Group, completed its primary task and published a, a final and peer-reviewed feasibility study report. The study revealed that under all study scenarios, the proposed CCA was deemed infeasible, because rate comparisons showed most rate classes paying more for power supplied by the CCA than from incumbent utilities, and because the CCA would not maintain sufficient revenues and working capital, capital throughout the study period. The negative findings of the feasibility study report ended efforts towards the formation of the CCA across the three counties. Agencies that had participated are now either not pursuing a CCA program, considering starting a CCA program of their own, or joining an existing CCA program. In Ventura County... In Ventura County, multiple agencies have shown interest and are electing to participate in an existing CCA effort initiated by Los Angeles County. On April 18th, 2017, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors unanimously approved implementation of the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority, also known as LACE or L-A-C-C-E. L-A-C-C-E, uh, Authority participants seek to develop an electric supply portfolio with overall lower greenhouse gas intensity and lower greenhouse gas emissions, uh, lower than Southern California Edison, and one that supports the achievement of greenhouse gas reduction goals and through the use of cost-effective local renewable and distributed energy resources at lower cost, or at least competitive cost, to consumers than SCE. According to the LACE business plan, the LACE Authority will offer, uh, cus, uh, consumers several options of renewable power. For example, 33%, 50%, and 100% renewable power. The LACE Authority seeks to create a joint powers authority that is financially sustainable and responsive to regional priorities and well-managed. Initial participants in the LACE Authority are those that joined the LACE Authority prior to December 27th. The initial participants are not required to commit any funds of their own to the LACE Authority startup costs. Entities now seeking to join after December 27th, 2017, will be subject to a LACE Authority Board of Directors approval and any conditions the LACE Authority Board finds reasonable, potentially including a monetary contribution which may be reimbursable through customer rate payments. In addition to execution of the joint power agreement, each participant is required to adopt an ordinance in accordance with the Public Utilities Code. As of the date of this report, the LACE Authority includes the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of Los Angeles County and a number of Los Angeles County cities. On December 12th, 2017, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors took formal action and elected to participate, expanding the LACE Authority to the unincorporated areas of Ventura County. Since the action of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, three cities located within Ventura County have also made the decision to join. Thousand Oaks and Ojai, who have signed the JPA prior to the December 27th deadline, and Oxnard, who has made the decision to join but will be signing the JPA after the deadline. Staff has been contacted by LACE advocates and has been provided documents related to their business plan and joint powers agreement. Staff has also obtained a copy of the December 12th board letter containing a legal opinion of Ventura County Council, which addresses the risks and liability to Ventura County and was considered in the Board of Supervisors' decision-making process. So, do we, do we have Gary?
Is that him?
Oh, excellent. Very good. Well, tonight we have Gary Jarrow, Chief Sustainability Officer for the County of Los Angeles, who has been leading the LACE efforts. Staff asked the council to review the information presented and provide direction. So with that, I'll give the podium over to Gary so he can take you through his presentation, and then, uh, he can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. As he said, I'm Gary Jarrow with the County of Los Angeles. So honorable mayors, members of the council, just take a little bit of time to, to talk a bit about the program and, uh, and answer any questions you may have for as long as you may want to answer those, ask those questions. So just a brief overview of what I'll talk about, just what is a CCA itself, how does it work, why cities are choosing to, to enter into these kinds of programs. Want to be clear, there are risks, and we'll talk about what the risks and how we manage those risks. We'll talk a bit about our business plan, was referred to in your staff's report. We'll go into a little bit of more detail. Talk a bit about the Joint Powers Authority itself and how it's governed, uh, and then the schedule for rolling out the program. So, under California state law, cities and counties have the right to, uh, serve the electric load of their residents and businesses. And this is what's known as aggregation, community choice aggregation. This is not a full publicly-owned, uh, electric utility like a, an LADWP, say, or, uh, or Pasadena Water and Power, but it's really a hybrid approach. Uh, we take on, as the, the city and counties together, really only three functions, and those are, we're gonna purchase or generate the electricity, uh, out on, we'll purchase out on the market or generate the electricity. We'll set the rates for that electricity, so we're, we're now a rate-setting body, and we'll operate customer programs tailored to our communities. And I'll talk about each of those in more detail in a moment. Southern California Edison will continue to maintain the transmission and distribution system, so they will actually deliver the electricity over their wires. We're not gonna go out and build new wires. Um, and they actually provide the meter-reading and billing services. So they go out, read the meters, uh, or electronically now, uh, send us the data. We'll send them what the, the power generation charge portion of the bill should be. They continue to provide, uh, charges for wires, uh, that, that, the delivery charge that cannot be discriminated between a CCA customer and an Edison customer, as well as all the, uh, state fees that are allowed. So that's the basic structure. We buy power, we set rates, and we operate customer programs. This is not an entirely new idea. Uh, this legislation has been around for over 10 years. The longest, uh, existing CCA in California is in Marin County. Uh, there are over 100 cities at this point throughout California that are in operational community choice energy programs. And in fact, the state of California has estimated that, uh, within the next eight to 10 years, probably 80% of the residents and businesses in a, in a eligible area will be, uh, in a CCA. They recognize that this is the future of the, of the utility industry. Our program at this point has 24 member agencies, uh, 25 of actually, as of last night. I was in the city of Whittier, uh, as was indicated in the staff report. Uh, two jurisdictions, uh, besides the County of Ventura, Thousand Oaks and, and Ojai have voted already to join. Uh, Oxnard is in the process of joining. We've been invited out to other city councils, um, throughout Ventura County. We'll be, uh, making these sorts of presentations and inviting your deliberation. I will say, we're not gonna be called the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Program for much longer, given the geographic diversity. Uh, the board is actually now in the process of, of seeking a, a name change. So why are hundreds of cities doing this, and why does the state assume that 80% of the, of the eligible population will be in these areas? Well, it really, the, the first, uh, reason really comes down to the, actually, the name of the organization or the name of the program. It's about choice. This is an opportunity to move from, uh, a monopoly where you have no choice in who is serving your electric load to a situation where you're served by one of two entities, and you have the choice freely to go back and forth between those entities. And basic economic theory will tell us that when you have competition, when you introduce competition into the marketplace, you actually see lower costs, better service, uh, and that's exactly why we're doing this. We think we can provide both of those things, but certainly, we're gonna be competing against Edison. Uh, the other is local control. Today, uh, your rates for electricity are set by the California Public Utilities Commission, which sits in San Francisco, not an open, transparent public agency, not the kind of agency where you're gonna be able to go say, "Hey, what are you doing about my rates?" It's a very, very formal judicial process up there. Here, through the Joint Powers Authority, it's the Board of the Joint Powers Authority with elected officials sitting on it that are actually setting the rates. And so you can be sure that they're gonna be very, very sensitive to rate increases. It's not gonna be, uh, I won't say pro forma, but it's not gonna be quite as simple as it is at the PUC. Local officials are, are accountable to their, to their constituents. Local control also applies to the idea of the customer programs. Uh, today, Edison's programs are a one-size-fits-all that are offered throughout the state of California. PG&E offers the same programs, San Diego Gas and Electric. Here, we actually have the ability to start to tailor customer programs to the needs of our own communities, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. The other primary driver for this is the potential for real rate savings. And we've done this study now three times, uh, once in our original business plan, once in an updated business plan, and again just recently. And this chart gets a little complicated, but the dash to line, uh, across the, the chart is what Edison currently charges for its base product electricity, um, which is why the blue line on the far left matches that. At that base product, we're gonna be offering 33% renewable energy. Edison offers 78%. We've estimated that we can provide that at 4% to 5% lower, uh, costs than Edison, and that's net bill. That's not just the generation portion. We also estimate that at 50% renewable will still be cheaper than Edison is today. And, well, I mentioned the competition. Just last year, Edison started offering a 50% and 100% renewable energy product because we had been out talking to cities about, "That's what we're gonna offer. We're gonna offer 33, 50, and 100." Edison is now offering 33, 50, and 100 essentially, although our estimates are that we'll continue to be much less expensive than them. And in fact, we, I, have set rates. Just last month, uh, we set rates for Phase 1, which is the initial, uh, pilot phase where it's only LA County municipal facilities. We've got about 2,000 accounts, uh, electrical accounts in the unincorporated areas of LA County. The Board of Supervisors, in giving us direction on setting rates for the county's accounts, said, "We want as much renewable as possible at, 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 uh, at or equivalent to Edison." So we're at 60% renewable for the LA County accounts, and we're 2% below Edison's rates. The other reason, of course, is there are significant greenhouse gas benefits that accrue. When you're pursuing additional renewable energy, you get greenhouse gas benefits. Uh, many, many cities have climate action plans. I can tell you, having written climate action plans, there's no single measure that you can actually put into one of those plans that will get you as much, uh, community-wide greenhouse gas emissions as this, as a community choice energy program. The last primary reason, and there's lots of other good reasons, but the last big reason is really the economic development opportunities. Uh, we estimated these in two ways, sort of a macroeconomic scale and a microeconomic scale. At the macroeconomic scale, uh, the return to customers of, from the rate savings is real money in, in people's pockets. That's money they can spend in the economy. It's real money in businesses', uh, books that they can spend on their business or reinvest in, in the local economy. So we've estimated about a $20 million annual savings from this program across the community. But more directly, we have the right, and Southern California doesn't have this today, uh, but as a CCA we do, to, to actually build our own solar power plants. Now, we don't have to contract with a third party. We can own generation. And if we go out and build a solar power plant, and we expect that we're gonna be doing that, uh, those create real jobs. And so we've estimated the benefits from that as well. Now, I said, uh, at the outset, of course, that I wanted to make sure that we were addressing that there are real risks and that we, we have a strategy to, to identify those. We're fortunate today, uh, that the energy market is about as low as it has been historically. Renewable energy prices are as low as they've ever been. Uh, solar power is, is about as cheap as you could, as it's ever been in history, but also has natural gas. As a result of fracking, uh, there is an abundance of natural gas in the United States, and that has driven down the price of natural gas electricity. Whether or not, long-term, natural gas continues to be, uh, at the low cost is, is anyone's guess. Some think that it's likely to go up, but, uh, entering the market today as a new energy supplier, we're going out and buying power, means we don't have legacy contracts, we don't have expensive old contracts. We are entering at an excellent time. But the market can change. So you need to be, you need to develop a portfolio, an energy portfolio, that actually manages against, uh, the volatility of the energy market. So that's a diverse portfolio, uh, with a mixture of long and short-term contracts. You need to hedge your risks. But the other risk is that, uh, customers leave the program in large numbers. And if that happens, of course, what happens is the remaining customers have to pick up more of the administrative costs of the program. Uh, and so there is a point at which that becomes econ, uneconomic. We modeled a 20% opt-out rate, whereas the average or historic opt-out rates from all the existing community choice programs is at about 7%. So we said, "Let's take a worst-case scenario, and 20% of the customers leave." At, at 20% of the customers leaving, we were just about break-even with Edison. It was hard to continue to maintain low rates. We don't expect 20%, we expect closer to 7. Uh, the last CCA to form, uh, recently is see, is seeing about a 4% opt-out rate. There are the potential, and this is a, this is a significant one that I wanna, uh, make sure that I'm explaining and, and really being clear about. Edison has the right to charge departed, what they call departing load or departing customers, uh, an exit fee. Uh, that, and that exit fee captures their stranded costs. And, uh, we all agree that they entered into contracts in good faith, five years ago, 10 years ago, with the expectation that they would be serving customers that we are now serving. And it's appropriate for us to pick up the cost for some of those contracts, uh, to pay our fair share. The question becomes, how do you calculate fair share, and what kind of transparency do you have into the, into those costs? And that's a, that's a, a very serious legal fight that's going on today at the PUC. We have lawyered up for it. As you can imagine, Edison has lawyered up, but this is, this is a, a risk. What is that cost, and is it gonna be unreasonable? For our financial planning, we actually assume that cost is gonna go up from where it is today, which is about 2 cents a, a kilowatt hour, um, to something closer to 3 or 3.5. And if you look at our financial, uh, projection over 10 years, you will see in about 2020, uh, a large bump in this cost, and, and that bump lasting for a couple of years. Part of the reason why we are rushing, quite honestly, to, to implement this program is so that we can start to collect cash and revenue, put it in reserve so that we can manage against that future increase. But there is likely to be a future increase in that cost. We're gonna do everything we can to make sure that it's fair and reasonable. But it's, it's a real risk that needs to be, uh, acknowledged and, and managed. And then the last risk, of course, is we are in a regulatory and legislative environment. Last year, the legislature introduced some bills that would've affected CCAs. Those are always a potential, uh, and regulation can always change. We are subject to state laws, so we're subject to the state renewable portfolio standard, for instance, and, uh, the need to maintain adequate reserves, that's state law. We are not regulated by the PUC. We are, uh, we're regulated by the JPA itself. When we put all those risks together in our business plan and actually sort of piled some of them up and said, "Can we manage these risks and still be economic?", the, the answer came out is that we could. And so we, we believe that we'll be, uh, economic over the long term. We don't want this program to just be, uh, you know, economic for two years, or three years, or five years, but really, we're looking at 10, 20 years out. This is, this is a program meant to stay. I won't go into too much of the history of how we got here, uh, but this goes back to 2015 when the LA County Board of Supervisors gave the, the first direction to staff to start working on these issues. Uh, it's gone back to the Board of Supervisors. The board approved it, uh, as was indicated in your staff's report, in April of this year. And when they approved it, uh, they approved a joint powers agreement that we actually sat down with the cities in LA County. We had not anticipated, honestly, that Ventura County cities were, were interested in joining us. You had your own, uh, three-county, uh, study that was going on. But with, uh, 40 cities at times around the table and councils of government negotiating out a joint powers agreement based on the best-practice joint powers agreement that we had seen in, in Northern California. So the board approved this, it also approved the $10 million to get the program running. Let me talk a bit about how that Joint Powers Authority that was created is governed, 'cause I think it, it was, uh, I, I was the one who was given the direction by the Board of Supervisors to go negotiate it, and the only real negotiating instruction I got from the Board of Supervisors was, "Make sure that cities feel that they have real power in this, that they have fair and equitable representation." And so we negotiated a one-member, one-vote structure. All votes, by default, in the JPA, you know, are votes of the entire membership on a one-member, one-vote basis. The County of LA has one vote, just as, uh, Ojai would have one vote, just as, as the City of Camarillo would have vote. We have built in, uh, a weighted vote possibility, and the weighted vote is only there following an affirmative vote of the membership, so it can't be used to move an item through. It can only be used to essentially veto an item, to try to change an item that the membership has approved, and it can only be called upon, uh, with three members agreeing. We didn't invent this structure, although this is a little stricter than they have in Northern California, and in Northern California, in the history of, of the CCAs, they have never actually called for a weighted vote. Everything is done on a consensus basis so far, but it's built in there as a, as a protection. Not surprisingly, there's a number of committees, an executive committee, a finance committee, and a community advisory committee, and in fact, tonight, we're having our third public workshop to talk about what the community advisory committee should look like. So there's a, a workshop going on currently, uh, in, in the city of Duarte. Uh, and then as members, the, the primary, we, we negotiate, and this was actually a discussion point in the negotiations, who should serve on the Board of the JPA? And the question became... And the question became, should it be elected officials, or should it be city staff? Now, we settled on sort of a hybrid approach, where we said, "The primary representative from the city should be an elected official. We want this board to represent the elected officials within the communities that are being served." But they can have up to two alternates, and those alternates can be either another elected, or a city staffer, or even a member of the public who has some expertise in these topics. There are a number of other questions that come up frequently. All cities collect franchise fees from utilities that operate, that have their equipment in the city's right-of-way. This program does not change that. Because Southern California Edison continues to own and operate and maintain the transmission and distribution system, you still have the right and will charge the same franchise fees you have in the past. It can affect, however, your utility user tax, if you in-charge a utility user tax, and I've discovered that not all cities do. But, to the extent that customer bills are lower, you have a lower base on which you are, a tax base on which you are imposing your utility user tax, so your utility user tax could go down. Now, I don't think anybody would argue that having customers with lower bills is a bad thing, but you have to recognize that that's a potential impact to the city's budget. On the other hand, your own electricity bill for your facilities will go down, and that may offset some of that loss. And then I've talked about Edison's role, but they will have the first, they'll be the first call for any customer. If a customer has issues about their service, they need questions, whatever it is, about their bill, the number on the bill will be Edison's. Now, if it's a question about our portion of the bill, we will be maintaining a call center. That call center will be here in Southern California. It will answer questions about, about our portion of the bill, and about our customer programs. And so the schedule, as I mentioned, we're rolling out actually on February 1st in the county's municipal accounts, and then in the second quarter out to the commercial and industrial accounts, and ultimately out to residential. Edison requires a six-month notice of starting. The PUC requires a three-month notice before the six-month notice, so there's nine months of just noticing that a city is joining before you can actually start electric service. So, cities that join in the first quarter of this year will start service in the early part of 2019. And I think there's a typo on there. So, if you join, as I, as was indicated, the, we had a set of initial cities that joined in 2017 that were all sort of batched together, and this was well explained to Edison and the PUC, and all were agreeable. Cities that join at the after 2017 will be considered by the LACE Board on a case-by-case basis, but I can tell you, we want cities to continue to join us. It's to our benefit as much as it is to your benefit to be part of a larger program, because the larger the ratepayer base, the thinner you can spread the administrative costs. And we want to make sure that we're keeping rates low. So, the more customers, doesn't mean we're going to have higher administrative costs. It's easy enough to, with the same staff, to serve a load of 2 million people as it is of 3 million people, but that's another million people who can help pay down those administrative costs. So we're, we are encouraging cities to join. There may be, if, if the market conditions change, and you want to come in at a time where it's, power is now expensive, and buying power on your behalf will affect the rates of all the other customers, we're probably going to say, "Why don't you wait till market conditions change?" And if, for us to go out and buy power on your behalf is a hard lift for us financially, we may ask the city to help cover some of those costs, as was indicated in the staff report, and that would be reimbursable. That said, the Board, in adopting this policy in December, said, "Cities that were affected by the wildfires would have a 90-day grace period to join, where they wouldn't have to go through that sort of cost analysis." And your city has asked us for that waiver. That'll be considered by our Board, the JPA Board, next week in their meeting. I've prepared that report already, and I'm recommending that that waiver be granted, but that is ultimately at the discretion of the, of the JPA Board, just as any staff recommendation to your council is at your discretion. So, to join the program requires that you adopt an enabling ordinance. That's an ordinance that tells the State of California and Southern California Edison that you want to serve your residential and business customers, and then signs the JPA. With yours, it's a little bit different, because you, you're one of the cities that may have a waiver, so you can sign the JPA right away, and then you can join the program. And as soon as you've signed the JPA and approved the ordinance, you designate a member, and you can start serving on the Board of Directors. And I'll say, as we've developed the program this far, we've been very, very careful not to make policy decisions. We've said, "We're going to hold off making as many policy decisions as possible while we're gathering the initial set of members, so that all members can engage in those conversations, the strategic planning in the policy decisions." So, if you were to join in the next month or two, you could, as soon as you join, you could start in those conversations. We will be having strategic planning sessions, starting probably February or March. So that's, that's the presentation. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, City Manager Norman, for inviting me. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one question. You mentioned the meetings. How often are they?
The Board currently meets once a month, the first Thursdays of the month. There are provisions for remote participation, so call in. We're looking at actually setting up kind of a remote location, probably in Calabasas City Hall. They have good video conferencing possibilities there. So we recognize people from Claremont, people from Ventura, people potentially from Palmdale and Long Beach. It's a long way for anybody to go to a central location. But there, once a month, there are about three hours. And that's because we're in the initial stages. I would expect that, once the program is up and running, and the key decision's been made, meetings will move to maybe every other month, and maybe ultimately even quarterly.
And currently, where are the meetings?
Physically, their meetings have been, we've rotated around among the members, although more typically now, meeting in downtown Los Angeles at Metropolitan Water District Headquarters, next to Union Station.
Okay. Okay, other questions?
I have questions.
Mr. Kildee.
Yes, thank you. You talk about your renewables, and my question is, where do you get your renewables? I know you had mentioned solar. And, what if there's a disruption in that? What if there's a fire, or rainstorm, or, heaven forbid, an earthquake of some sort? How will that affect those that sign up for, for this?
Sure. So, we'll be getting the renewables from a variety, again, we want to create a portfolio that's resilient, so we'll be getting some wind and solar from out of state, as well as some wind and solar from in-state, some geothermal from in-state, some small hydroelectric power, probably mostly in-state, but potentially some from out of state. And if there's a disruption, one of the things that we are required under California law to do is provide a 15% reserve on all, on our total load, so that if there are disruptions, we have backup to go serve that load. And that's required by, through what's called the California Independent System Operator, who operates the grid on behalf of all of California. So we, we actually have a contractor right now, that is our liaison to the grid, and they're scheduling when the power comes in, they're sending the day-ahead forecasts, they're doing all of the work to let the grid operator know that we have the load, where the load is coming, or where the power is coming from, and that we have reserves against it in case something happens.
So if Edison's grid is down, and I ask these questions, because I live in a part of the city that we have, well, we're not immune to having blackouts, let's put it in that phrase. So, if that's the case, then when Edison's system is down, you're down as well.
We're down. They operate the grid on behalf, locally on behalf of us. So they won't be able to deliver the power that we're putting into the grid.
Okay. Then, my second question is, the cost of joining, and I know it hasn't been completely determined yet, but do you have a reasonable estimate about what it potentially may cost?
Well, for, for Camarillo, because of the request, the waiver request because of the wildfires, my guess is it's going to be zero. If the Board says, "You know what? We're not going to grant that waiver request for whatever reason," and again, I don't expect that to happen, the worst-case scenario, and I just want to be honest here, the Board is encouraging cities to join. So they, they made it very clear when they adopted this policy, that we don't want the policy to be punitive, we don't want the policy to keep people out. But the worst-case scenario, we, what the Board policy says, is that if we have to go out and buy 60 days' worth of power, and we can't afford to buy that power on your behalf, until we start collecting ratepayer revenues, because it takes about 60 days from delivery of electricity to revenue coming back, to float that 60, that first 60-day window, we may ask the city to pay that 60 days' worth, and it would be reimbursed through the ratepayer revenues. For a city the size of Camarillo, that could be in the couple of million dollars, so it's not insignificant. But again, I'm giving you the worst-case scenario, and I don't expect to be that, that kind of charge to be imposed. We, we've talked to financial institutions, we've been approached by multiple financial institutions. They want to give us a line of credit that allows us to bring in new cities without having to go out and acquire additional capital.
I just have one follow-up. If we decide to go forward this, each ratepayer in the city will have to decide whether they want to opt-in or not opt-in. And if that's the case, how do they do that? Is it by the mail? Is it email? Is it texting? How do they, how do you go about that process?
So, it's actually the opposite. The State of California, in its wisdom, had everybody automatically enrolled in the Community Choice Energy Program when it launches, and the customers have to actually opt-out. And the opt-out occurs, there's, there's four legally-required notices. So we'll send a letter to every customer 60 days in advance of the program, 30 days in advance of the program, 30 days after the program started, and 60 days after the program has started, that says, "You are being enrolled in this program. Your city has chosen to join this program. If you don't want to be in this program, call this number, go to this website, return this postcard, and you will be opted out at no cost." But it is an opt-out program. And then we would expect the city, we'll do our, those are the legally-required notices. We're going to be doing other communications, but we would hope that cities would want to use their own communications channels, your newsletters, your city channel, whatever it is, to start to let customers know this is coming, to let businesses and residents know this is coming.
And what number do you look for in that? I mean, it's very difficult to get 100% compliance with anything. What is an acceptable number on that?
In terms of opt-out?
Yes. In terms of people actually even filling out the paperwork, or going to the email, or whatever they're going to use.
Right. Well, if people don't fill out the paperwork, then they're going to be served by the Community Choice Energy Program automatically. It'll be by default. If they do fill out the paperwork, or call the number, or go onto the website and opt-out, then they're going to continue to be served by Edison. And even once the program started, this is the nature of the competition, even once the program has started your past the 60 days, you, as a customer, can go to, come to us and say, "You know what? I didn't realize I got signed up for this thing. How did I get signed up? I want to go back to Edison. I prefer Edison," for whatever reason. And you have the right to do that. Edison assesses, I think, a $1.50 a charge for residents, and $5 for businesses to, to switch their account back to Edison, and then imposes a one-year requirement that you stay with them before you come back to us.
In your experience, has that been an issue with those cities? Potentially, I guess, up in Northern California, has this been, has this been an issue?
No, there's been very little churn. People, people tend to be in this program. The ones that opt-out tend to stay opted out. We don't see a lot of people coming back and forth.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Morgan.
I have a couple, three questions. First of all, there's a $10 million that the LA Board's putting up. Okay? It was kind of unclear whether or not, if we come in now, that we have to pay the refund, or pay our share back to them. And that would cause higher rates, of course, for a while, or whatever. That's still true.
That money will be repaid actually through all ratepayers, so that cost will be spread among all the ratepayers, not, it won't be to any individual city. And it's a, and that's a very minor charge relative to the total bill and the total number of ratepayers.
Okay. Now, you have, you know, we talked about renewable energy. We talked about that. Where would you, you're going to build your own facilities? Because solar, I mean, Edison's building them all over the place. I'm talking about solar, solar energies places everywhere, a lot of places. And also, all the windmills, you run across everywhere. Where are you going to get yours? Because they've got theirs. Where are you going to get yours?
We're going to, we've done, at least at this point, we're, we're probably going to build anything for a couple of years, because we want to build up cash reserves, so we have sufficient capital to capitalize those projects. But, what we would do is, we would do essentially an RFP or an RFO. We'd ask people to say, "We've got this land, we want to offer it to you for solar, here's how much it's going to cost to build the solar. Are you interested?" And so we would, we would want to look at where there's good solar capacity, where permitting and land costs are cheap, all of those kinds of things.
You don't think that'll take a lot longer than that, because they have trouble getting them all zoned themselves out in the desert, because you don't want to cook the tortoises? And, you know, I'm, I'm telling you, you can't just put them anywhere.
No, I'm, I'm well aware of that. I don't, again, I don't expect that we're going to be building these things for a while. We, first, we have to build up the capital, that we have to go through that sort of process. At the meantime, we're going to be buying power off the market.
Okay. So that means, for a while, you won't be, say, 50, 700%, or whatever, of yours will be renewable energy, because you don't have all that available.
We'll have, we'll be able to offer to customers 100% or 50% or 33%, of course, and the customers can decide among those how they want to be. Whatever the commutative ask is among all the customer load, we're going to be out and go out and buy. So if it's 40%, we need to go out and buy renewable, or 50%, that's available on the market. And in fact, this was one of those conditions we had to test, because we are going to be the largest player out there. Is there, are there adequate renewable energy reserves in the marketplace today for us to go get? And the answer to that was, yes, we can easily achieve that.
That'd probably be out of state.
Some portion of it will be out of state, absolutely.
Okay. Also, you mentioned this briefly, and I, you get suits pending with Edison, State of California, somewhere. What would happen if they win?
If they win? Well, they're not, right now, there's a proceeding, not a lawsuit, but if the proceeding goes their way, that charge, that, that stranded asset charge would go, will go up by about 50%. And that's what we've modeled in our, in our financials.
Exactly. Because that makes your cost less, makes your rates less.
It does for the, for the years, but of course, those stranded assets reflect 10- and 15-year contracts that are going to be expiring. So those aren't going to last forever. We've looked at those contracts, we've assumed that they're going to, that those rates will go up by that amount for probably three, maybe four years, and then those contracts are going to start to fall away, and ultimately, we'll be back to where we are today.
Lastly, you have a lot of cities up in Northern California, but your agency that's running this thing is here in Los Angeles.
Well, we don't have cities in Northern-
Oh, I thought you said you had some of Northern, part of Northern or Central California.
I showed the Northern California cities, just to give you a sense of who's in the program-
Right.
-in, in a program.
Other programs.
But our program is only LA County cities.
Oh, okay. It's not your program. I got you. Okay.
Those are other CCAs, other joint powers authorities.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll hold off.
Mrs. McDonald, I see a list. I'm trying to think what hasn't been answered. Um, are you on? No, that was coffee. We talked about people who can, can opt-out. Why would someone opt-out?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. One, there are some people who ideologically are fundamentally opposed to government offering programs or services, and so they see this as a government creep, and they want to, want to go back to Edison, where they think, you know, is a private company, and they'd rather have their services from a private company. Others may have some special deal with Edison, or some special rates that we won't be able to match. I expect we will be able to, but some, and then there are people who are simply loyal to Edison for, for whatever reason. But what's why you see such low rate, opt-out rates, is because most people don't fall into one of those three camps, so you see about a 5% to 7% opt-out rate, but not much higher.
So when, when Edison offers the lower rate, because they have their, what do they call their peak time opt-out, or where, you know, you can have a rolling blackout? Would you have something along those lines?
This is, this is where we have not made those kinds of policy decisions, so when we start the program, we're going to mirror Edison's rate structure exactly, although rates across the Board will be 5% cheaper. But we're not, we're not going to change those tiers. But once the Board actually now starts to get experience, say, a year from now, it's going to start looking at the rate structures and saying, "Well, what can we do different that's better, that serves our communities better?" And so we'll start to, to change those rate structures.
Okay. And you just, you mentioned it before, and you just mentioned it. So tell, just to sum it up, why are you going to be 5% less than Edison?
I should have addressed that it's true, because it seems hard to imagine. The, the primary reasons are, one, the market conditions. As I said, I did say this, that we, we're entering the market where it's at an all-time low, so we're going to be able to buy power much cheaper than what Edison has bought So, we're going to be able to buy power much cheaper than what Edison has bought over the last five, 10, 15 years. Long-term, that's not going to last, because Edison's going to be competing directly. But we are going to be a government nonprofit entity. A joint powers authority is a government entity, which means two things. One, there's no profits to be made, so we're not building in shareholder return. But more importantly than that, is that we can borrow money at government rates. We have the access to low-cost government borrowing, and the 98% or 95% of the cost of this program is out buying power, and you have to capitalize those purchases. So, we have a natural advantage vis-a-vis Edison. And then, I guess the last thing I would say is, we're going to be a small, lean entity at first. We visited, we actually went up north and visited them. And these existing JPAs that are operating, they're operating out of industrial warehouse parks with very small staffs, you know, they're not, these are not grand buildings in downtowns that are being operated. Our executive director, which we're recruiting now, totals in compensation package is something on the order of $300,000. I can tell you, the Edison president probably makes 10 times that.
And let's say things don't work out, and does a city have the ability to withdraw?
Yes. This was something that was clearly, an issue that was raised when we were negotiating the JPA. There are withdrawal provisions. Those provisions require that you give us 180 days' notice that you want to leave, so that we can then try to dispose of any contracts for power that we had on your behalf. If we are unable to dispose of those, we would come back to you, or if the market conditions are unfavorable, we might come back to you and say, "You know what? The contract's going to run for two years or three years. Do you want to wait that long to depart? Or do you want to depart sooner and pay the marginal difference between what we bought the power for and what we're able to sell it for?" But that would be a negotiated process.
So, that's a spot where the city itself would have some liability, if indeed it ever wanted to go out of the system.
That's right.
But everything else is the ratepayer to the JPA.
Correct.
Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. I had one more. Oh, from buying out of state, and I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly when this was, but it seems to me we've been kind of down this road before, and it was probably back in the 90s. And it didn't work out really well. And we got into some problems with, I don't know if it was the structure of the whole thing, and then, we had some issues with buying out of state, power bringing it in. Do you foresee any of that occurring here? Or what's going to be different today that was there then?
Yeah. What's different, because we, California has continued to purchase power from out of state, even after the deregulation fiasco of the 90s. What's different here is the legislature said, "You know what? We went too far in deregulating, and we let too many people into the market, and private companies started to find loopholes," which is why only cities and counties can operate these programs. Because the state of California said, "We trust cities and counties to do the right thing and not to arbitrage and create market havoc." So, it's in our hands as government officials to make sure that we're operating these programs properly.
So, they basically said that private industry can't be a competition with another private industry, only government can be against the other.
That's right.
Okay. I think that's mine for now. Mr. Tremblay.
Madam Mayor, I've got a pretty extensive set of questions, as you might suspect. And I know that we have members of the public who are here to testify. Do you want to hear from them before I pose what may be a pretty long set of questions?
And I have a couple more, too.
Sometimes the questions help answer their questions as well.
Well, I mean, I can proceed with my apologies in advance, so, all right. Mr. Giraud, thanks for being here today. And as I start off, I just want to emphasize that I like this in concept, and I also want to express my gratitude to members of the public, local citizens who met with me regarding this concept. I really appreciate it, because it helped me start doing some of my due diligence for this whole idea. And those folks are proponents of this idea. So, the first thing, I've got a set of policy questions, and I'm going to have some legal questions for our city attorney. The first set of, the first policy question is, tomorrow, the California Public Utilities Commission meets to discuss the registration process for CCAs. And in reading the PUC's agenda packet, and in reading the proposed order and the resolutions for that, it appears to me that if that draft resolution is approved by the PUC, then the expansion of CCAs, and that would include LACE, that would include LA CCE, would be stalled for a lengthy time pending at least two things. Number one, the filing of implementation plans. And second, the fulfillment of resource adequacy requirements. And I won't go off into the definition of resource adequacy, because we would be here forever. But it's in the draft PUC orders. And I'm a little surprised that this didn't get covered. So, could you please help me understand, what is that proceeding all about? And what has LACE's response, if any, been to that order? Because that's a pretty significant hearing that's going on tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, just one correction. It's not going on tomorrow. They postponed it over to February 8th, because of the outcry from cities, including many cities throughout the state of California, League of California Cities. So, that's been pushed off for a month. Our response has been twofold. One, of course, we organized cities, we organized a response to say, "The process by which you're doing this," and this was a resolution that was introduced on December 8th, required public comment by December, I believe it was 18th, and would have been voted on, as you say, tomorrow, over the holidays, was simply not an open, public-engaging process. And so, we made procedural arguments that said, "We should actually have more time for the public to engage in this process." And they responded to that. The second thing we've been doing, actually, is actually sitting down directly with Southern California Edison to negotiate over resource adequacy, and say, "Look, we recognize there is potentially an issue here." And without getting too detailed, the issue is what's known as short-term resource adequacy. Edison has to file in August, between August and October of the previous year, its plans for the following year. CCAs that form after they filed, Edison has purchased short-term resource adequacy for, and now, potentially, we're going to go out and buy the same thing, and it will be double-covered. That's not in any benefit. So, we went directly to Edison and said, "Look, for our cities that are departing, that you didn't know were departing, and you own now resource adequacy, we'll buy it from you at your cost. And that will solve the issue of a double accounting, solve our issue. We need to go buy it anyway." Edison has said, "Great, we're open to that, and we're actually in the process of negotiating that as a settlement." We've been telling the Public Utilities Commission that we are in these discussions with Edison to solve what the problem, we think that they've identified a real problem, it wasn't a problem ever that raised the level of it needed 30-day action, but be that as it may. They identified a real problem and proposed a solution that was preposterous relative to that problem, a two-year waiting period, essentially, while things get worked out. We said, "Here's a much simpler solution. We'll just buy it." And we've had a reception at the PUC that says, "You know what? If you can work things out with your utility, we're good with that. We don't need to step in."
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Let's say on February 8th, notwithstanding the working out of that, working out of that, and it's at cost, and the negotiations are the negotiations, right?
Right.
But the devil is always in the detail. If the PUC on February 8th, and thanks for correcting me, because I only looked at their website about four or five days ago, that must have just happened. If the PUC adopts the draft order, how will it affect the LACE expansion process?
It will slow cities that join. So, under, if the ordinance has, or the resolution has written today, is adopted, then if you were to join even tonight, you would not be able to start electric service until June, or January, rather, of 2020. And the reason for that is you've missed the, have to get it in before the end-of-the-year deadline that allows you to start in the first day of the next calendar year. So, anybody that started in, if we were to file last month for you, when we filed last month for the 21 additional cities, those technically would be carried over until January of 2019, so they would be delayed.
So, there's no relevance to the December 27 deadline?
No.
This is apples and oranges.
Those are two completely separate deadlines, yes.
Two different deadlines?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay.
But in order to preserve the rights of those 21 cities, we actually filed our implementation plan at the end of last year. And in that implementation plan, we said, Edison, and Edison put this in writing to us, a letter that said, "We will allow those customers to be transitioned in June 2018 as proposed by LACE." Now, Edison, of course, is saying, "Well, we'll do that if you come to this negotiated agreement about buying RRA." So, they're backing off from their previous commitment, and that's part of the negotiations we're having.
Okay. I noticed in the staff report, and in the, you had a slide up on the three-phase rollout, and the executive summary, and I'm, members of the council, I'm talking about page 19A4, where it describes the rollout, and this is the executive summary for LACE versus, and you won't know these page references, Mr. Giraud. Giraud, I'm going to apologize. And if you also look at big page 65, which is the board letter to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. The three-phase rollout, on page, on the executive summary, it indicated that the first phase were the county's own municipal facilities, and that's consistent. Phase two was all customers located in the unincorporated county. And then, finally, phase three were customers within the cities that joined LACE. But I take it, that's not correct in the executive summary. What's correct is on the board, right?
What's correct is on the board, yes. The cities that joined us said, "We don't want to wait," and we said, "We don't understand why you'd have to wait either." So, we accelerated the cities, and we, but we bifurcated it by commercial and industrial accounts.
Right.
Residential accounts, because there are fewer commercial-industrial accounts, it's a slower phase in, but even though there's fewer of them, they're actually a significant, I think, 40% of the load. So, we'll roll out to 40% of the load in the unincorporated and in the cities in phase two.
Right. From a load standpoint, they would be more, the M and I would be more, would be higher, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
And we want to do this...
Particularly per capita.
Yeah. And we're doing this before the summer hits, because summer is when you actually generate the most revenue as a utility. We want to start to generate those revenues to, again, put reserves away to protect against future volatility.
Okay. Now, if Camarillo were to join, then it would be known as an initial participant. I'm sorry. If Camarillo were to join and the waiver were to be, as, the waiver were to be made by the LACE board, Camarillo would be an initial participant, right? And I'm referring now to the joint powers agreement.
Right. So, this is where there's a little nuance. You would be a no-cost-to-enter participant, but the initial participants were those that were in the implementation plan that was filed at the end of last year. So, you would be in the next implementation plan. So, we've amended the implementation plan once, to include the 21 cities that joined before the December 27th deadline. The board policy says, "We'll let cities that are affected by the wildfires join at no cost." But their schedule, their schedule is affected, because we won't be able to include them until the next submission of an amended implementation plan, and that next submission will be after the first quarter of 2018. So, in April, we'll submit an implementation plan that includes all of the cities that have joined in the first quarter.
Well, forgive me, because I got to press you on the language in the joint powers agreement. It's a professional bad habit. Sorry. Let's stay with that same hypothetical. Would the city of Camarillo be a no-cost initial participant, or a no-cost noninitial participant pursuant to the JPA?
It would be the latter.
Okay. But the only difference, the difference would not, there would be no difference from a cost standpoint, correct?
There'd be no difference from a cost standpoint.
It would only be with respect to a scheduling and implementation standpoint.
When you actually enter into electric service. But, so that's what will be pushed off, because of the 90-days' notice to the PUC, and then, another six months' notice to Edison. But you can be a participant on the JPA board in that meantime, even though you're not receiving electric service, and won't until January of 2019. You can sit on the board and start to shape the program today.
Right. Now, conversely, if the authority board said, "No, we're not going to do a waiver," then in that case, the city would be a noninitial participant?
That's true.
And we'll put it at some cost, correct?
At potentially some cost. And again, that's negotiated, too.
Right. Well, I noticed that in the staff report, and I'm on big page two in the staff report, that that amount could be reimbursable through customer rate payments. Where in the, I read the JPA and read it, and I couldn't find it. Can you help me?
That is not in the JPA. That is a matter of policy for the board.
Mm-hmm.
That's why it says could be.
Could be's.
Could be. I'm just trying to get my arms around...
But then again, it could not.
That's right. It could be either way, right?
There's several of those here.
Okay.
We actually deliberately, as we were negotiating the JPA, had to make decisions about how much detail do we put into the JPA, and how much do we leave for bylaws, operating policies and procedures, and the rest, that are more mutable over time, because the JPA requires a much higher standard to amend. And so, some of those things did put off for the bylaws or for operating policies and procedures. And this is one of those operating policies and procedures questions.
Okay. I like those operating procedure and policy questions, unfortunately. Okay. So, let me go now to the withdrawal scenario that Mrs. McDonald was talking about for a few minutes. And I want to follow up with a series of questions, if I can.
Of course.
And let's do this in hypothetical section, okay? Let's say that the city joins, the city becomes whatever it's going to become. Let's say, in this case, it's a no-cost, noninitial participant. Okay? I know I'm really down in the weeds, but let's stay with the hypothetical.
I'm with you.
All right. So, then you go to section eight of the joint powers agreement, and for my colleagues, that section eight of the joint powers agreement begins on big page 54 of the packet. The city decides to withdraw for, doesn't matter what you call it, some business reason. I mean, it doesn't agree with the length of the terms of the PPAs, the power purchase agreements, or other business decisions of the authority. Let's make that the hypothetical. Is the city's monetary contribution at that point, is it non-recoverable? Whatever initial cost that's paid in?
I think under this hypothetical, you said you are a no-cost...
A no-cost...
So, you don't have any monetary contribution.
So, there would be no, so there'd be no initial, so there'd be no, other than program cost, well, I guess, other than program costs that were paid in advance?
There would be, the costs you could potentially be liable for under that scenario would be, if we had entered into contracts to purchase power on behalf of your residents and businesses, and you now want to depart, we have to go out and, in fact, you may not have the latest version of JPA, because it was amended just at the December board meeting at the request of a city, that says, "The LACE authority has not an affirmative obligation, but will make best efforts to go out and sell power on behalf of departing customers and the departing cities. And those departing cities may be responsible for the marginal difference between the purchase price and the sale price." That's when, I think, to a previous question I answered, but that is a negotiated process. So, if the market is bad, and you want to leave, and we could say, "Sure. Well, we can sell the power we bought on your behalf, but we're only going to get, you know, 75 cents on the dollar for it. Do you really want to try to pick up that remaining 25 cents?" You may not. You might say, "You know what? We'll stick around for a year until that contract expires instead."
Okay. And that's a payment that would come from the city. It would not come from the city's residents. It would not come from the city's residents.
That's right.
Ratepayers. Okay. So, all right, so let me now go to, let me sort of make the hypothetical even bigger. Sorry about that. Let's say that the city joins LACE and in February of, we'll just call it 2021, the LACE board commits to some long-term PPAs. And let's say 20 years, 20-year PPAs. And it's over the objection of this city or, and/or other cities. And I want you to also assume that the approval of the long-term PPAs, they do not require amendment of the JPA. There's a specific provision in the JPA under section 8.1.2, which is on that page I gave my colleagues. And that the fiscal year, and the fiscal year of the authority is June 30, correct?
It is, yeah.
Okay. So if the city wanted to withdraw from LACE in that circumstance that I've outlined, remember, we're in 2021, we've got long-term PPAs, would the withdrawal be the 180-day advance written notice that's provided for in the JPA?
That would be the start of the withdrawal process, that's right.
Okay. And that is, so let's talk about that for a second to make sure I understand it. So let's say, let's assume that that notice of withdrawal, let's say that decision by the authority is made in February of 2021. But the notice itself has to be given prior to the end of the calendar year. So it couldn't be given until late 2021, right? Under the JPA's own provisions.
180 days in advance, that's right.
And therefore, it would not be effective until June 30 of 2022. So that, there's a, am I correct? Do I, I mean, do I understand the withdrawal period correctly under the JPA?
I think you do. Although I'm, I have to go back and actually look at the specific language of that provision of the JPA because I don't specifically recall that you can't, you have to give notice at the end of the calendar year, but perhaps you do.
Well, I think, I think that's what it, I think that's what you have to do. I guess the concern that I have is, in that instance, if that's correct, that's about a 17-month lead time before the withdrawing party actually gets to withdraw. And so during that time, there are financial implications, including the selling of the contracts or portions of the PPAs that would serve the city's residents. But there's a cost inherent in that, if I'm right. There's a cost inherent in that 17-month wait period for the city.
I don't think there's any new or marginal cost inherent in that. Your city's residents and businesses will continue to pay their utility bills during that 17-month period for those, for that 17-month portion of the 20-year PPA. So we'll be selling off the other 18 and 1/2 years. But there, at that point, once we know you're leaving, obviously, we would not be purchasing power on your behalf going forward. We'd say, "You know what? This is a departing load. We're not going to, we're going to vintage essentially the contracts we have and not assign any new contracts to this city."
Okay. And to go back to something you said a few minutes ago, there was a, an amendment, I believe, to the joint powers agreement that you indicated that was approved by the authority board early last month. I don't know if it's reflected in the copy of the joint powers agreement council has been provided. But it is reflected in the letter to the Board of Supervisors, in the BOS letter that the board looked at in, I guess, on December 12. And that says that the LACE authority would use its best efforts to sell the withdrawing party's pro-rata share.
That's right.
Okay. I've got, it's not really a JPA, well, okay. 24, I've got a couple of legal questions, but it's for the city attorney. The, but before I let you go, how many cities are there in Los Angeles County?
88.
88.
Not all of them are eligible, however.
How many, why would a city not be eligible?
Because it has a publicly-owned utility, like LADWP or Glendale Water and Power. This only applies in investor-owned utility areas.
Oh, I see, okay.
So there are 82 eligible cities. There are six publicly-owned utilities within LA County. So there are 82 eligible cities. Of those, two cities have formed their own CCAs rather than join ours.
Okay. And to date, 24, or I guess 25, no, magic number. But 20, 24 have, as of night, as of last night, 25 of those cities have joined. But that, it's somewhat less. I think there's Ventura County Board of Supervisors, but in terms of cities, there have been, I think, three within Ventura County that have joined, or two?
Two officially have joined. One has voted to join.
And one has voted to join. Okay. That's all, I really appreciate your answers to the questions. That's great. I have a question for Mr. Pyrick, if I can.
Ken.
Mr. Pyrick, my understanding is that the CCA would be only acting, in essence, as a transmittal device, a transmittal mechanism. I'm sorry, only as a power purchase mechanism, got that backwards. And that Edison would continue to have all responsibility for transmission of energy.
Yes.
And I understand that that's, that's the case. Is there some kind of provision in the public utilities code that spells that out? Because I am concerned from a liability standpoint, I want to make sure that when it's alleged that Edison has caused a problem leading to wildfires or et cetera, I don't want that to come back on the CCA. So is there some statutory mechanism? There's nothing in the JPA. Is there some statutory mechanism that accomplishes that?
Not to my knowledge. However, as you pointed out, if the, if Edison is the one that is responsible for the power transmission, and if there's a failure of some sort on behalf of that transmission where there's a fire or whatever, the result being, that would seem to me logically that it would be the responsibility of Edison. But I don't know of any specific statute that says that.
Well, it doesn't prevent somebody from saying the cities or the joint powers authority is responsible for that, too, in terms of a deep pocket, right?
Well, I mean, anybody can name anybody they want into a lawsuit, but there's got to be some responsibility or duty. And I don't see one here on behalf of the authority in your hypothetical. If you're saying that there's a failure of the transmission, there's some accident that occurs, somebody is injured, or there's property damage, what is the responsibility of the authority? And I think under that hypothetical, it would seem to me that that would be the responsibility of the supplier of the power, which in your hypothetical would be Edison. But I don't know of a specific statute that says that.
That you could point to on a demur or summary judgment that says CCA is not, LACE is not responsible for this.
I don't know of any such statute.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for the moment.
Or what's written into the agreement with Edison. There's a lot of wording. You've got to find out what's in that agreement.
I don't think, I'm not aware of any such agreement that would even be relevant, though.
That they're working on now.
Right. But we're trying to decide this tonight, so, okay.
Are there other questions?
Madam Mayor, I need to make a clarification. Gary, you and I had corresponded on the, on the fire waiver, on the fire hardship waiver. However, I had not replied to you with a formal letter or email regarding that. And so I need to be upfront about that. And so this council knows that I had not actually done that. If you'll accept that tomorrow, if the council so directs, then I can certainly send that.
Absolutely. I had, I had taken your email as essentially a request.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to file a more formal letter, that would be welcomed.
Okay.
We have a more formal letter from Simi Valley, and we're shipping the package to the JPA board tomorrow. So tomorrow would be good timing.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? Mrs. McDonald?
This one is for Brian. I know it says in the reports that, I know it says in the reports that there is no liability to the city or to its residents because the JPA is going to be its own separate legal Can you see anything that would, other than this withdrawal process that we'd have to go through if we went out, is there anywhere that you see any risk of any kind of financial liability on the part of the city of Camaria?
Yes. I think that if you look at big page 66 and 67, there's a discussion of the legal risk to Ventura County. And I believe there'd be a similar risk to the city as a member as well. Under the Joint Exercise of Powers Act, there's a provision that refers to the liability of the authority and that the, and a member would be liable for the obligations of all of the parties to the agreement. Now, there is, unless it's provided otherwise. So then at the top of page 67, there is an exception which says that, it's the otherwise provision that says that they're not liable for everyone else's debts and obligations. However, there's an exception to that, which is for tort liability, and that's discussed in length on page 67. And it appears to me that the tort liability is attempted to be covered here under the JPA by section 9.3, which says that the authority shall acquire such insurance coverage as is necessary to protect the interests of the authority, the parties, and the public. So assuming that the insurance was sufficient to respond to a particular tort liability, then the city would be covered. But as with all things, it would depend upon how much insurance there was, whether or not the incident was covered by the insurance. So that would be a potential liability, in my opinion.
I think one of the things that worries me, and let me talk this through and you can answer it for me. Right now, it seems simple. We're buying power, it's coming through Edison's lines, it seems simple. But the day, to me, you go out and you begin to produce energy because we've now built the solar fields and their whatnot, we've taken on a whole different piece of the whole big picture. And now, if something were to happen with those, where does that liability fall? Now, you know, does it extend out to us? Is there exposure there for the city?
Yes, I think there is exposure. However, as I mentioned, it appears under the terms of this JPA that they're seeking to reduce the potential risk by requiring that there be insurance obtained. It also says that the authority is going to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the parties. However, the indemnity is only as good as the party that's providing the indemnity. So if there were some catastrophic loss and it exceeded the insurance limits, then I believe that there's potential liability. However, with, as with all things, the city, for example, the city's a member of the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and they provide you with coverage through a joint powers authority. They obtain what's called excess insurance for, you know, many millions of dollars. But theoretically, there could be an incident that could occur that could exceed those limits. So you have potential liability today, not, you know, separate and apart from this issue with the authority. So if you would participate with this authority, I believe that there is some potential liability. You'd have to assess whether or not the upside of joining this authority and the savings that might result from it is something that would outweigh the potential risk. And I probably want to know a lot more about this insurance that they're talking about here and what kind of insurance, I don't know, has the insurance been acquired yet?
Yes, it has.
Okay. And what are the limits?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but I can provide you with the certificates tomorrow.
So whatever, whatever those limits are, in theory, there could be coverage for up to that amount. But if the law exceeded the insurance limits, then the members of the authority could have individual liability. And it's joint and several liability under the, under the law. That means that, for example, if there's a major party and they seek to collect from a particular member that has a deep pocket, they could do that. That member then is entitled to seek recovery from the other members, but it depends on how deep their pockets are. So it's all a matter of money.
And so theoretically, let's say you look at the insurance coverage that is there that they've purchased, and you, and you feel a little uncomfortable that it isn't great enough. Could we go out and purchase additional coverage through our own insurance JPA?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I think that's probably something that we'd want to ask JPA about. Now, evidently, there's quite a few cities that have looked at this and are willing to accept that risk. And perhaps we can ask the speaker if he knows whether or not this is the issue that we're discussing here, has this come up in other cities where you've made presentations? And if so, what was the outcome of that discussion?
It has, and in, the conversation has gone very similar to what we've just heard. Basically, the conclusion has been that the risk to the city is minimal, but it exists, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't say otherwise. Of course, there's always liability. Anybody can sue anybody for anything at any time, I think, is the, is the general rule of thumb. But again, we hold our members harmless and indemnify them, and we acquire insurance, and that's the best we can provide. If the members themselves don't think the insurance is adequate, they can always direct staff to go acquire additional insurance.
That's true.
Well, that's assuming that there's an insurance market that's available for that. So that's why I, that's why I'd said there'd be some questions that would be asked on, whether or not what he just said is correct or not depends on whether there's an insurance company that's willing to write the insurance, so.
I have two more, then I'll be done. From the Edison standpoint, it's all going to go through their lines. Is there any priority with them, where everyone's treated equally and that's all?
In fact, they don't even get to prioritize. The state of California runs the grid. Edison owns and maintains the lines themselves, but the state of California operates the grid on behalf of all of California.
So we couldn't be left out in the cold because something else happened there?
There's no way they could discriminate against us.
Okay. And just for the public and everyone, can you just answer the simple question? If you're a resident or a business in the city and we join, will they see, really see any difference except perhaps a lower bill?
That would be the only thing they would notice. In fact, I've talked to people that I consider very knowledgeable about the energy industry in Northern California who are now covered, and I've asked them if they're aware that they're covered, and they said they're not.
They don't even know. And has there ever been a time when the rates have gone higher than what they initially were paying?
In, again, in, the county of Marin has a rate philosophy that they want to essentially match PG&E rates and use those revenues to provide higher levels of customer incentive programs, whether it's EVs or solar. And Marin only changes, and most CCAs only adjust their rates once a year. Most of the investor-owned utilities adjust their rates four times a year, quarterly. And so there was a period when that quarterly adjustment resulted in the Marin CCA's rates being higher than the PG&E rates. But that has now since readjusted.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Morgan?
Just one. On page 66, big number 66, the initiation liability. It talked about the, if this got started, the LA County would be entitled to reimbursement from the authority. Authority is made up of the cities and the counties that are part of it, correct? Now, if we, if for some reason, maybe things weren't going correctly, we decide to withdraw, would we still assume that liability that we had as part of the membership?
The, the actual repayment of the county's initial loan will occur probably this fiscal year, when we go out and acquire financing for phase two.
But I mean, our part of the financing, okay, let's get that part, too. We'd still be part of that financing?
That financing is being funded through the ratepayers, so I don't think it would accrue to the city. And so, like, I suppose we could try to parse this out at some point in the future. If somebody were to leave and how much of that initial $10 million is still somehow not collected through the rates that accrues to the departing city. But my guess is that's going to be a very difficult exercise and not result in a whole lot of capital coming back to the, to the county.
Are each member, is each member of this authority counted as one member or a member by population as their responsibility?
One jurisdiction, one member.
Okay.
Mr. Tremblay?
Question, and it regards to PCIA. And on, it's on big page 27. This is on LACE's executive summary. And this has to do with the sensitivity analysis, the business side, and I won't go too far down in the weeds on it, but in essence, and you talked about this before, I think you referred to it as the stranded cost. This is like the stranded cost component?
Try not to use too much jargon because nobody knows what a PCIA is.
That's all right. I like, I like acronyms, so, but what I wanted to know is, if that PCIA were to increase because of the pending item that we talked, you talked about earlier, is that, in terms of a savings, the 4% savings, is that factored into that calculation of a forecasted 4% savings on the residential side? Worst case?
Well, worst case is hard to imagine what that is. But we've, so we've estimated what, basically taking what Edison has asked for, so presuming they get everything they ask for, and PUC doesn't get... they get everything they ask for, and PUC doesn't give them something more than what they've asked for, then because we're starting now and building up cash reserves, we believe that we can manage that increase in the PCIA in the future and still maintain low rates, a 4% discount through a period of about three or four years until that PCIA starts to adjust down because contracts start to expire.
Is that based in the sensitivity analysis in large part upon existing market conditions?
It's existing and forward projections that are used by Edison and the market generally. So we've looked at Edison's forward market projections as well as industry-forward market projections and relied on those to estimate what the market conditions will be five, 10 years from now.
Right, which may be, you know, who knows what they'll be five or 10 years from now? The market conditions in 2027 may be a lot different than what they are now. But for purposes of looking at the market right now in 20, well, we're not in 2017 anymore, are we? We're in 2018. In 2018, would you say that it would be the initial intent to go with, or the authority's initial intent would be to go with the shorter-term purchase agreements as opposed to the longer-term agreements?
Very clearly. And this has already been expressed by members of the board to, as we're going out to power procurement requests for proposals, all of the members are testing this out. You know, the county is committed to this, of course, the county of Los Angeles, but all of the members are testing this out. And so the basic instruction is, don't enter into long-term contracts right now. We want to see how this goes for a year or two. So I think the longest contract we have is three years.
Okay, right. And you pay the higher percentage, but on the other hand, you've got a lot more flexibility.
That's right. And, you know, there's a period where you can do that because the market is low and the market is projected to remain relatively stable over the next couple of years. But our purchase energy advisors are telling us, you know, pretty soon, not maybe in 2018, but probably in 2019, you want to start looking at some longer-term contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one more.
Mr. Kildie?
So, and just kind of, just if I could drill down just a little bit, as Mr. Tremblay calls it. You know, there's a lot of issues at stake, but, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Ratepayer, you know, they always look for the bottom line. And potentially, the bottom line to this could be somewhat of a rate deduction. And that could be somewhere in the range, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but the range of perhaps 3% to 5%, which is significant, but it's not a quantum leap in a rate reduction. So having said all that, then is that why you brought up the fact that, A, there'll be jobs, B, more renewables, C, it brings another player into the marketplace? Is it all kind of, just kind of lumped into this proposal?
Yeah, I don't think, I think if you relied solely on the rate reduction as the rationale to join the program, then you would be missing all the other benefits. And one of them that we haven't really talked about in great detail is the ability to tailor programs to the community and say, what do we, what's a priority for us in our community? Is it electric vehicles? Is it solar? Is it energy efficiency? Is it battery storage? Or is it further rate reduction? How should we use some of these revenues? But maybe I'll respond to the 3% to 5% as not being significant by turning it around and saying, if Edison were proposing to you today a 5% rate increase, would you not find that to be significant? Would you just say, oh, that's okay?
Yeah, I understand the hypothetical. Again, you can kind of understand where I was coming from on this, too.
Sure, of course. Yeah, I mean, I freely admit that, you know, if I'm, as somebody who pays whatever, I pay a couple hundred dollars a month in energy bills, if I'm paying 198 rather than 200 or 190, you know, that's a Starbucks.
Okay, I think we've finished.
I may not be the most rate-sensitive person, but it that way.
I just had, I was looking through, and I only had one other question, and I don't know if there are any in town or not, but there are people and companies who have agreements with Edison and sell back their excess electricity that they produce. What happens to them and all this?
They, because they have the ability to opt out of the program, they can stay with Edison and continue to sell to Edison, or they can sell to us. And we will offer, we can't, as I said, we're going to mirror the Edison rate structure, which includes those kinds of incentive structures. But what we've seen in other CCAs, we haven't made these decisions yet, is that they're actually more generous to those customers and pay them a higher rate for the power they generate.
They being the CCAs?
The CCA. Right now, Edison probably pays something on the order of 30 cents on the dollar, 50 cents on the dollar, relative to what you pay to buy electricity from Edison. Some of the CCAs say, we're going to pay you exactly what we're charging you. So if you're generating solar on your roof, you pay 18, we'll pay you 18 cents for that power just because we charge you 18 cents when we sell you power.
So they have an existing contract? The contract, they have to complete their contract? How does that work?
They have annual true-ups, or what they're called, and at the end of, so at the end of an annual cycle, and everybody's cycle starts from when they actually started generating electricity, Edison goes through a true-up period, and that's the point at which you would also have the opportunity to switch over.
Okay. Okay. Are we done with questioning? At least for now.
No, I'm sorry. Well, okay, but let's say I'm a resident that doesn't have solar on their roof. I've got the ability to opt out at any time, I wish, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And, but if I'm a, if I'm a resident that has a contract with, an existing contract with Edison that's extant, it can't be impaired, but on the other hand, does that limit my timelines in terms of opting away from Edison and going to LACE?
The short answer is that you're not limited, but it's your best economic interest to wait until the true-up. If you, if you leave before the true-up period, and we'll send this out to all the customers that are on these kinds of rates, explaining this to them, and people who have solar tend to pay attention to those letters unlike many utility customers. If you leave midstream, you simply lose any excess credit you may have generated. So if, you know, you're leaving in July or August after the summer and you generated a whole bunch of credits on your system, you're not going to get the value of those credits. If you wait until the end of your true-up period, they'll pay you out the credits that you've generated.
Charlotte, I have one more question.
Okay, one more, and then we want to go to the public.
Can you just explain to me once again, the, because we're in the fire zone, that we've got a 60- or 90-day, is it a grace period that we've got? Is that?
It's a 90-day period during which you can join at no cost if the waiver is granted.
Okay. All right.
Okay. We have blue cards out there. I see the city clerk has some. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a blue card and hand it to the city clerk. I'll call the names in the order. I'll call your names, and our rules are that you have three minutes. I can see a clock out there, same timing as the clock up here. It'll count down. When it gets to, when you get to have one minute left, there will be a sound. The timer will go from red to yellow, and we ask you to please complete your comments by the time it gets to zero. Otherwise, a big trap door opens up, and you just fall down, and the next speaker can come. So I'll call first Linda Parks. And please state your name for the record.
Linda Parks, for the record. And I do want to compliment you all for your thorough questioning. You really have done your homework. I think this is such a great opportunity. The county did do a study with the Tri-counties, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, and found it would be pretty expensive to start our own. And the generosity, I think, of the county of Los Angeles, putting up the money to be able to do the initial purchase, has really changed the tables and does make it so that it is financially feasible for the county and for the cities to join. I do think it's a great opportunity. I'm here, I do encourage you to join because the more we get in Ventura County, the more cities that join, the more votes we have at LACE. And that is also a JPA that we need to change the name, so it's not Los Angeles is the main name, and we'll be working on that. I am excited about this. At our Board of Supervisors, it was pointed out that in the future, about 85% of all the jurisdictions are going to be inside some of, some kind of CCA. And I think getting in now, getting in early, we can get to the policy table when decisions are being made on things that are going to be very important for our ratepayers. So I hope you will consider joining, and I encourage you to do that. I do like the aspect of the local jobs of those cities that are in the LACE or whatever the JPA name's going to be. That's where we will be looking at putting projects and having nice renewable, clean energy projects as jobs in our community. And obviously, the goal of being able to reduce our carbon footprint is a big one. You look at the Southern California Edison, they're paying their president $4.7 million a year. This is not a for-profit entity. LACE will not be a for-profit entity like it's Southern California Edison. That means there'll be more funds available to do exactly what it is charged to do. So I do encourage you, and I thank you for, again, your really good questions.
Question, Your Honor. Question, Linda. Question. Was Edison at your meeting to answer questions or make a presentation at all?
They didn't speak if they were there. Thank you. And I think by law, they have to stay neutral.
I don't know that.
Todd Schuman?
That's an interesting question.
I live in Camarillo, Camalar. This issue is about freedom of choice. I want to be able to be free to choose who I purchase my electricity power from. I don't particularly like being stuck, having to purchase from an investor-owned monopoly, which is pretty much what Edison is. I want to have another choice. And I think when we have choice and there is competition, we see better results. We see better behavior from both Edison, and we're going to see innovative behavior from LACC. Right now, we don't have competition. We have a monopoly. And I want that to change, and I can't do that unless you enable me to do that. I'm stuck with Edison unless you make an affirmative decision to enter this system, enter this city into the JPA, and then I get a choice. And if I don't like LACC, I'll go back to Edison. What we're seeing already with Edison is Edison is having to scramble so that they've gone before the PUC just recently to offer programs that LACC has already said they were going to offer. They didn't do that until this last year. That's one of the things that came out at the Board of Supervisors. So we're already seeing beneficial impacts from this proposal. It's already forcing competition, and I want to see more of it. More competition gives me more freedom of choice. Thank you.
Rick Gardner?
And I've been the administrator of Facebook page we call Ventura County Energy Choice. And basically, my first choice would have been if we could have actually had our own county community choice energy. But since inexplicably, the consultant report said for some reason it wouldn't be cost-effective, well, I think the best choice is now to go with LA Community Choice Energy. I'm very impressed by their program. I think they'll give us the choice we need. I totally agree with what Todd said and what Linda Parks said. And I think, I think it's a very professionally-run outfit. They seem to have the answers to your questions. And so even though it's, wasn't my preference, I strongly recommend you go with LA Community Choice Energy. Thank you.
Christine Brown?
My name's Christine Brown, and I'm a Camarillo resident. Thank you for putting Los Angeles Community Choice Energy on your agenda, and thank you for being so, I guess, what do you call it, really digging in and being careful. I should hope that if anybody watched this meeting tonight or was here appreciated your thoroughness. And that's why you were elected. And so I'm hoping that once you look at everything, that you will support Los Angeles Community Choice Energy. It's a way for us to contribute, I guess, in a way that's larger than an individual if we're worried about, what do you call it, human-caused climate change and our carbon footprint. This is a way to do something about it. And this is how you pursue renewables on a larger scale. So I'll stop there. And also, I wanted to say thank you to Supervisor Parks and Gary for speaking tonight. Thank you.
Linda Heelman?
Yes, pull it right down. There you go. Thank you. Is it picking up? Okay. I'm a Camarillo city resident. I'm also both an attorney and a CPA, and I really appreciate your thoroughness, asking the good questions, doing some thorough analysis, thinking it through. Very important. It's something that I've liked since I've moved from LA back in 2003 to Camarillo. I've been very pleased to have lived in a well-managed city, so kudos to you for that. What I really want to see is, is Camarillo citizens, ratepayers have the same opportunities for, to benefit from community choice, the way that I've seen other jurisdictions in Northern California and even in Lancaster benefiting from community choice. And the ways that they've been benefiting have been the revenues that were going to monopoly investor-owned utilities have been retained in the jurisdictions, and those revenues of the existing community choice energies, Marin Clean Energy, Sonoma Clean Power, have done some very, very innovative projects locally that have benefited the local residents. Marin County has done a pilot project with Tesla with power walls and solar. They put, they've done, Sonoma Clean Energy has done a project with solar on irrigation ponds. They've been able to, they've also done an EV, electrical vehicle purchasing plan that allows greater access for community members to be able to purchase electric vehicles. Lancaster took over their lighting, went to very efficient lighting, took over, converted their city buses. So I want that, too.
Angus?
I still have a little bit of time. I was about ready to. So I want that kind of opportunity, too. I was attending the Industry Association meeting in October, CAL CCA, where all of the other CCAs were there presenting what they had been able to do. City of Lancaster converted to electric buses, and they also convinced China, an entity in China, to locate a bus manufacturing facility for electric buses in their jurisdiction to offer jobs. So there's tremendous potential in this beyond just the 4% to 5% rate reduction, and it can really benefit our jurisdictions, our ratepayers, and our communities. So give us some serious thought, and I hope you'll decide to adopt and go with LACC.
Question, question. Don't leave yet. Yo, come back.
Yo.
It's the only way I got her attention, didn't it? Listen, when you mentioned those solar cells over the irrigation channels, one thing I know about solar cells, they'll cook you after a while. That's why they don't like it in the desert, because it hurts tortoises. How do they keep that from hurting those channels?
Well, these are irrigation settlement ponds.
I understand, but...
So they've, and in fact, Japan did this, and they have one of the largest in the world. So when Sonoma Clean Power Water Authority, Sonoma Clean Power, their JPA started with the staff that were the water authority staff, actually did the initial research.
I'm just curious, because it sounds like an idea, but I always thought that would... dehydrate and everything else.
It's been successful, and not only in Sonoma, but, so I'm happy to send you some links so that you can see how those projects work, but they're fabulous.
Good. Thank you.
Angus Simmons.
Honorable Mayor Craven and distinguished members of council, I'd like to agree with everybody in thanking you for your very careful and timely consideration of the question of joining LACE. I'm very impressed by the opportunity for local control. I'm very impressed by the idea of having JPAs with public board meetings and talking about rate payments and all of this under the auspices of our local elected leaders. I like the idea of higher renewable energy. I like the idea of lower prices than SCE is currently offering. Noted that there was a 5% lower price for agricultural customers on offer, which I think is very nice in Ventura County and for Camarillo. I like the idea of the fact that the energy benefit programs haven't been formally sketched out yet, and that by joining now, Camarillo could participate in the process of making those policies on things like net energy metering, on feed-in tariffs, on distributed energy resources, and energy efficiency programs. And even if the PUC, as Councilman Tremblay mentioned, comes up with some delaying program, still, Camarillo could participate in all that, and those are wonderful benefits. I think it's a great opportunity with the startup costs already taken care of by LACE, and that they've already come up with the overall structure and planning for that. That's a big benefit. I noticed that 100 cities now have signed up for CCA, CCE already. In the county of Ventura County, we've seen Thousand Oaks and Oxnard in Ohio already in a very short time, along with the county. I notice our friends in Guerra and Calabasas and Santa Monica have already come on board. I noticed that Santa Monica came on board in early December, and I noticed that they also engaged in the PUC process by sending a letter with their views on that very shortly after, within a few days, so it's possible to engage in the PUC process. And we have the examples that Marin County, Marin Clean Energy has already been underway for seven years, so the experience is out there. All of these new programs, CCE programs, have found energy adequacy and found the resources to get started. And seems like the neighbors of all these programs have really liked them, because Marin Clean Energy got Contra Costa to join them, Sonoma got Menasino to join them, and thank you, and I hope you'll consider this.
Come back. Couple of questions.
One minute.
No, don't turn and run. Come back. Couple of things, I need to have this clarified just to make sure. If we opted in, when will our residents start paying, start paying your bill?
I think that's not a question for him, Mr. Moore.
No, okay, okay. I thought he was, knew a lot about it. Sorry about that.
He's a resident.
I know who he is. He's part of this.
So if you were to join in the first quarter of this year, you would start electric service in the first quarter of next year, so your residents would start receiving, they'd still receive their Edison bill, because that's who handles the billing, but within that, there'll be a page that covers our charges.
Okay, every, when does theirs, theirs actually starts in a year or right now?
They would start electric service a year from now.
So no paying until a year from now?
No paying for a year from now.
Okay.
Assuming no PUC, to what?
Assuming the PUC resolution is currently drafted is not adopted.
Okay, I have a question, and this is a Mr. Tremblay what-if. Maybe it's happened in other places, but if this is such a good deal, and everybody opts in or nobody opts out, or not enough people opt out in enough cities, and enough cities join, and enough counties join, what eventually happens to the equipment that SCE owns that you want to use?
They get paid for maintaining that equipment. They charge a fee for the delivery of.
Right, but if they lose all their customers.
There's still going to be a wires company, and in fact, that's.
They're going to be a wires company.
As they think about their future, that's one of their futures, is as a wires company.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't know about that. I'm sorry, I kind of disagree with that. They've got so many solar plants and other things that out there, they spent a lot of money on. That's a debt that has to be recovered, and they're going to make money to recover that debt.
They will recover those costs absolutely by selling that power to us or others.
Selling the power to you. Okay, so that's the way you're going to get that.
They're going to sell it into the market, and we may be buying some excess Edison power in the future.
They still have to deliver it.
Okay. This is a receive, file, and give direction to staff. We're not actually making the decision tonight. Whatever we do is going to have to come back to us if we decide to move forward. Of course, if we decide not to, it won't come back to us. So what are the thoughts of the council?
Want me to start?
Mr. Kildee.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief and I'll be quick. I think we have a very thorough discussion here. And to me, the issue is not us against them. It's not necessarily who does what to whom. The bottom line to me is that this is an opportunity for us to provide more options for our ratepayers. And this is the first opportunity that I've had in my time up here to do this. I think there's been a lot of very diligent, very thoughtful questions on this. There still is some detail work to come before us here, but I think that it's enticing enough for us to move forward from this. And I'd like to see us move forward with this option.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yeah, let me plunge in. So there's two things. First of all, I again want to express my appreciation to the local proponents of LACE with whom I met a couple of weeks ago, and they really helped me in terms of starting my due diligence process on this. And there are two things that kind of color my perspective on this. One is that I guess I'm not a fourth-generation Marin/Sonoma kid for nothing, but who happened to move down here about 34 years ago, and love it here, and my roots are here now. And also, the fact of that if you consider electricity as a commodity, which it is, it's really fundamentally no different than water. And water, with my professional background in representing water joint powers, authorities, and other water entities, is a commodity that is and can successfully be supplied by local government. So starting from those two premises, and I'm aware that the Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma Energy authorities have done very well by their residents, and I'm impressed by the work that they've done, and some of it has been cutting-edge. I don't know about the irrigation ponds in terms of Marin, but I was trying to figure out where those were, but, or was it in Sonoma? Okay, thank you very much. I like the competition aspect of this. I mean, the refrain, the pitch here, I mean, to come right down to it is, it's cheaper, bless you, cheaper, cleaner, and more local control. And I got the cleaner part, I got the local control part, the cheaper part I'm still working through, but I think there is enough of a hope of that, that I think is realistic, that I can support. Part of it is dependent upon the sensitivity analysis, which is in the LACE business plan, and sensitivity analyses, as we all know, can vary from month, day-to-day and month-to-month. But I do like the competition aspect of it, and I think CCAs are the way that folks are going. So forgive me for the lawyer's perspective, particularly from joint powers, authorities, because that's my background, but I also think, by the way, that I tend to separate out the risk elements of this from the financial provisions, and risk is financial, I get that. But you can make risk judgments, and it's all in Section 8 of the Joint Powers Agreement. You can make those judgments with a certain amount of clarity, particularly when you've got identification and insurance provisions that will allow you to quantify in your own mind what that risk would be. I will tell you what's important to me here, and that is, and Mr. Drew, thank you for clarifying, and let's see if I've got the nomenclature right. If the city of Camarillo were to join, it would be a no-cost, noninitial participant. And my understanding further, and you're nodding, thank you. And my understanding further is that the only difference then for Camarillo versus one of the 24, no, 25, who have already come in, is it's a scheduling issue, it's not a cost issue. It would make a difference to me if there was an initial upfront cost, because number one, I wouldn't know what that cost is. And one of my jobs up here is to look out after residents' pocketbooks, because they pay, just like you and I pay, the bills every month, and we see what our energy costs are. And that makes a big difference to me. But based on, if the city can be a no-cost, noninitial participant, then I'm supportive of this. That's kind of the bottom line.
Susan McGonagall.
Let me do the next. Well, to start with, and no offense to all of us in the room, I'm not sure that government can always be the most efficient and the least expensive way of doing things. And so to simply say, we're going to form a JPA and we're going to save all this money, normally I might not say that's not the reason necessarily to do it. On the other hand, I think one of the biggest things about this is, is that it brings down those rate, setting those rates, and it brings down the operation side of all of this to more of a local level. It takes us a little bit out of the hands of the state, and then, of course, the private side being Edison. So it brings it down a little bit to the lower level, we have a little bit more of a say in it. I would agree with Supervisor Parks, though, is that we do need to get more of Ventura County cities to participate, because we all know what happens when we're in that big pot with our large neighbor to the south. We're kind of the little fish in the big pond, or however that saying goes. So it, just because we have one vote at the table doesn't mean we're always going to be able to get, you know, our votes through. I see this as a choice. I'm hoping that it's set up in a way, though, that, you know, Edison finds its place in the energy world, and that it doesn't hurt those customers who are somewhat connected and reliant on being an Edison customer, that it's only a good thing and doesn't have the, sometimes it's those unintended consequences we have to worry about as well. But it certainly would give options, and as long as we've got those risks covered, I realize there's risk in every decision we make, but it really seems like that for the city of Camarillo, we have very little risk. And I think I would appreciate, though, that we look at the insurance piece of it to make sure we all feel comfortable as you work through this. But I could support looking at this and bringing an agreement back and giving an opportunity for our residents to either opt in or opt out. I would ask, though, that the city of Camarillo take on the responsibility of really doing a good advertising or information to our citizens so that they understand what's happening, so that suddenly they don't see in their bill all this new stuff, and they have no clue what's happening. And they need to really understand how they can be in it and how they can be out of it. But I thank everyone who's come and been a part of this and helped us work through the details.
I've heard a lot of things tonight. This lets me know that there is a potential for people to save some money, but things I need to see, and you had brought back to me by staff, to make sure that, first, how many jobs will be displaced by Edison? No one's talked about that. And if we go that route, if we go that route, how many are they going to lose? What does that mean to our economy in California, or in city of Camarillo? You've got to look at that, too. You can look at jobs you're producing, but how many are they going to lose? Sure, and last, next, assure me that the city will not assume any economic liability. That's, hopefully, staff will bring this all back to us, because that could be something that would, of course, grab a lot of our chins and say, no. Assure me that all of our residents will be notified about this ability to, about what we're doing, and their ability to opt out. Because if they don't, and they're just put in the program, they don't know what happened to them, and you don't know what could happen. Maybe their rates would go up, who knows? So I think they need to be notified that they're going into this program if we do this, and they have the ability to opt out if they don't like it. And this is not automatic placement. That's the things I need to know when we come back to make our final decision, but I think it's a program worth looking at and worth pursuing, so.
Well, I think it's in anybody's benefit to get anything out of the decisions of the Public Utilities Commission of the State of California. And I think it probably is going to be a good thing to not have, to pay shareholder profits to Southern California Edison shareholders. However, the electricity is going to be bought, or some of the electricity is going to be bought, from companies that do have shareholders, so that aspect is still there. I think as this comes back to us, we all have to be thinking, is one of us, or are all of us willing to be the representative and spend the time it's going to take to make the decisions to help form this group and help, and it's not going to be a one-hour trip or a 20-minute trip someplace. So the meetings are going to be lengthy in setting up an organization, even though it's pretty well set up. There will be a lot of policy decisions and a lot of things to consider, require a lot of readings. So I think that's something else that we, as the ones who will be making this decision eventually, have to think about. And I think, you know, we've heard from seven people tonight, we heard from three or four additional people other nights, which is probably 10, 15 at the most out of 65,000. It isn't like there's a landslide here asking us to do this. So we will have to make sure everybody understands that if they want to stay in, they can, if they want to stay where they are, they have to opt out. And that's for people who pay electric bills. If you're a tenant and you don't pay your electric bills, you're going to hear a lot of hoopla that doesn't affect you. So if you have an electric meter, it affects you, that if you get an electric bill, it will affect you. And we have to make sure of that, or we'll be getting a lot of calls from people saying, I didn't get a chance to opt out. Why not? Because people don't understand. So staff, do you have direction? Do we need a motion? What?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd appreciate a motion to the effect of bring back to council for consideration adoption of the JPA, and then we can get it set up to have you do that. I believe it's a two-step process. There's an introduction and then a final second reading.
For?
For adoption.
When you bring it back?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so is there such a motion?
I will make that motion, but I'd also ask staff to bring us answers to the questions that were raised.
Exactly what we asked them to bring back.
That is in the staff report.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Everybody understand the motion? Okay, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That is the end of our regular meeting. Other than, we still have a couple of items to consider under the closed session. I do not believe there'll be any announcements when we come back?
We do not anticipate any.
Okay. So we will recess to closed session.